Buenos. The legislature is back in session for this morning. The bill and the agenda, we're moving along as we as we receive the committee reports, then we're moving forward. So I'm going to recognize Senator Manasiva Tyhren on Bill Number 23-31. Bente Ches. You ready? Tabia. Bente Ches and Bente. Senator, you're recognized.
Hafadeh, good morning, Madam Speaker. This is the substitute version, Bill 23. I want to thank the Chairman of the Committee on Public Works and Transportation Utilities and Veterans Affairs and his staff, of course.
Do you want to make a motion first to place in their reading?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion to put this on the third reading file.
And would you like to speak on it?
For discussion, yes.
Okay, please proceed.
I'd also like to make a motion to include Senator Tom Adda as a second co-sponsor.
So on that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I again like to thank the Chairman of the Committee and his staff for their work on getting this bill on the floor. Our offices have been working very closely together, and I believe that we now have a much stronger bill before us today. Now, the original intent of Bill 23-31 was to raise the public's awareness about what's been a longstanding road problem down in the southern village of Maritzo, Aggett, and Yumatic. I wanted to increase the public discussion about the frustration that were that was has been being has been felt by the residents down there. Many of them have wanted answers for years, and this was an attempt to give them that. And with all things considered, I believe that we are on the on the road to succeeding that that effort. Now, through numerous meetings that we've had, roundtable discussions on the various road construction projects that have been taking place throughout the island, and in fact, I believe that this bill might have prompted those discussions. I think we've discovered a lot of or have gained a lot of information on these road projects, in particular, the repair of Billy and Pigwatt Bridges and the Aggett-Yumatic Road. And much of the information received from those meetings has evolved this bill. Now, this substitute version removes any reference to the Aggett-Yumatic Road because, as we've learned, the project is scheduled for completion this year. Now, the focus of this bill is the two bridges in Maritzo. Those are the Billy and the Pigwatt Bridges. It mandates the Department of Public Works to commit to a project planned and a timeline, not a deadline for completion, but we're looking at a timeline for their plan. Now, this bill will still provide for avenues to be taken if DPW determines that the plan or timeline cannot be met, but we're looking for some accountability, as the department will need to provide an explanation as to the reasons why they are not able to complete these projects in a timely manner. There will also now be documented information which explains why the project or projects may face a delay, and information will now be readily available to the legislature as well as the entire community, when in the past, that wasn't necessarily the case. Now, as I stated at the hearing on this bill, it's important that these projects are completed. It's equally important that these projects are done correctly, and I have full confidence that the Department of Public Works and its representatives will do just that. Now, we are bringing the issue even more into the forefront in hope that it will allow the people to receive the information and answers that they've been looking for, and I suspect this will be helpful in addressing those concerns, which many residents have had since these two bridges bridge projects commenced over six years ago. And we owe it to the residents who must deal with this inconvenience on a daily basis. So I ask my colleagues to support this measure when it comes up for a vote. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Tyhren, on the motion, Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of Bill 23, and I commend my colleague for the introduction of this bill. Madam Speaker, it was kind of interesting during the public hearing on this bill, there was quite a bit of back and forth, and, you know, some some comments as to sort of what we do sometimes in introducing legislation, and that there are line agencies in the government of Guam that, you know, have the full responsibility, and if we just speak to them, and I fully understand that, and I agree. But, Madam Speaker, this is this has been an issue that's been going on for over six years now. And I remember during the discussions in the public hearing, one issue that was brought up, that the issue of acquisition of property, in particular with the bridges in Moleso. And, you know, the issue of working that out, and the fact that, you know, finding the landowners and doing all this research and figuring all that out, and I simply brought up that we cannot, you know, in terms of these critical roadways and infrastructure, we cannot be lax when it comes to those issues. And and I even went to the point of saying, if it takes eminent domain, do it. And then it was discussed that, well, you know, even that is not the easiest procedure, as that even that takes a year or so. But, Madam Speaker, we've been dealing this with this for over six years now. That year would have easily been taken care of in terms of that issue, and we can figure it out later. Sometimes eminent domain gets a bad rap in terms of, you know, the government exercising its authority, but it doesn't mean that you take land for free. You compensate the folks as in terms of fair market value, but sometimes you have to deal with issues as they're as they come about and confront these issues, because the public good is what we're talking about here. Madam Speaker, in a time now, when we're looking at our fragile tourism industry, we know that one of the jewels on our island of Guam is the beautiful southern portion of our island, in particular, the beautiful area in Moleso and Kokos Island. And it's unconscionable during these times that our guests travel over those bridges with one-way traffic. But what's even more unconscionable, Madam Speaker, is that our people from the south, who have to make their way north to provide for their families on their way to work. And what's even more unconscionable to me, Madam Speaker, is the fact that our buses that take our children to and from school have to travel over those those dilapidated conditions and those bridges that that really, you know, are probably not even engineered in the current status to the to the satisfaction of understanding that they would they're really fit. So, Madam Speaker, I commend the author of this legislation. I commend her her now second co-sponsor on understanding that, yes, there's a lot of projects going on on Guam, and there are critical projects when it comes to bridges in particular, because we're so concerned about opening the landfill on time, which is important, no question about it. But on the other side of the island, where that critical infrastructure exists, we have to pay more attention to it. And even though it does mean sometimes that we should exercise some more, I guess, discretion of picking up the phone and calling our our good agencies and talking to them about these issues, sometimes it takes legislation to get these things done. So I commend the author, Madam Speaker, and I hope that the resolution of this is sincerely the reconstruction of those bridges, so that the southern residents on the western side of the island can enjoy what we're doing on the eastern side of the island for the landfill and to take care of our people and our tourism industry in the beautiful south. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I look forward to voting in the affirmative on this legislation.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. On the motion, and, yep, Speaker Ben, you're recognized. Thank you, Linen.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, there's that old saying, better late than never, and I think that's was kind of like the attitude that some of these departments and agencies had with regards to taking care of the problems that affect people's lives, that we'll get to it when we get to it, if we get to it, and the people wait. And I'm so glad that the governor now has this customer service program that is supposed to change that attitude around, you know, whether it's the Pepsi model or whatever model, it's the customer service model. And for the people of Moleso, Madam Speaker, as the retiring speaker rightly noted, we started dealing with this problem seven years ago. And while we may find ourselves, when we travel and we go into nice quaint towns and across the country or different parts of the world, and we find these nice quaint one-lane bridges, and we have to wait for each other, and we kind of say, wow, how nice, how quaint. Well, it was planned that way, and the bridges in Moleso weren't planned that way, so it ain't quaint. It's frustrating for the people of Moleso. And over the years, we have sent many, many letters to DPW saying, what's the problem? Get on it. And they come back with all these excuses as to why they can't get on it. And so we have, and certainly I have, if you check the files there, you'll see many letters that I've written to DPW, kind of reminding them every once in a while, hey, what's happening with the bridges in Moleso? Why aren't we fixing those bridges? And it ranges from, well, we don't have the money, to we can't use federal funds, to we can't find the landowners, to, I don't know. And I don't know whether they were just waiting to run over to excuses or to get a law passed. This law's not going to make them do it, but it certainly is going to give them and this body the opportunity to make sure that they keep getting on it, that it doesn't get pushed to the side once again, and they go on to something that they think is more important, because it requires that they get on it. And so, in that respect, Madam Speaker, I'm certainly in support of this piece of legislation. You know, the issue of, well, we we can't, and I'm just afraid that they're going to come back once again with regards to the road, and that they can acquire that strip for the second lane of the bridge, but in between the two bridges, they're saying, that's private property, portions of it are private property, and we can repair the bridge, but now you can't have two lanes in between the bridges because it's private property. I just I just I can see that coming almost. And, you know, maybe we should list down here, we already know all the impediments, we know what the excuses are, and we're asking them to send it to us again. I say we list them in here, you know? And and put it down and say, check these off. Because that's what we've tried to do over the last seven years, get them to check off. Every time they come back and they say, this is a problem, well, here's how you solve that, here's our idea, here's what you need to do, go ask this person, and and get on it. We hope that the new direction, the new administration at DPW will be responsive to the needs of the communities in the southern part of the island, and will move on these things, and will resolve these things, and that we all we get out of this bill is a report on what the impediments are. And I know it says, and solve it, and solve it, but we hope that that is exactly what's going to result on this. Madam Speaker, I guess I just wanted to maybe some technical stuff. On Section Two, since we're now limiting the responsibility to just the Director of Public Works, so the word directors should really be singular on line 13 of Page One, it's unless we're talking about both the the Director and the Deputy Director of Public Works, but...
You have the substituted person?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it is a strike through.
Mlagon Adzosti?
I think I need glasses then, Madam Speaker. Oh, no, they're striking, okay. I see it, I got it, I got it. You're right, Madam Speaker. I see the strike through there, okay. So that really is, you know, the thoughts I have on this, it really has been too long that we've kept the people from the south waiting for a resolution to those two bridges that affect their lives every single day, and that they deserve the attention of this government to solve that problem, and that we will ensure that DPW gets on it and keeps on it until we restore those bridges, so that the people of Moleso and the visitors traversing those roadways and bridges will have the convenience of a two-lane bridge. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the amendment, I mean, the motion, I recognize Senator Tom Adda.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of the bill, and I want to commend the author for introducing the bill, because I think far too often, we find that when a problem occurs up in the north of the central part of Guam, we are quick to get on it, because that's where the larger population is. But when it's down in the south, it's kind of, as the preceding speaker had said, we'll get to it when we get to it. And and I think this bill, basically with respect to those two bridges, would certainly bring an end to that. And what this bill is doing is, as opposed to the idea that was originally introduced, which basically said, produce a bridge by within nine, you know, within a certain timeframe, the bill was amended to say, show us your plan of action. How are you going to replace those two bridges down there? Show us that plan of action within the next 60 days. And in that plan of action, we do know that right now, the biggest impediment is the right-of-way acquisition. And the way that process works is then DPW has to go and approach, identify who the landowners are that are involved, and sit down with them and 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 try and negotiate a mutually acceptable price for the acquisition of that small piece of property that is necessary for the bridge to sit on. If after those discussions do not prevail satisfactorily, and it becomes a stalemate, then at some point, the Department of Public Works is going to have to say, okay, we're not getting anywhere, we then have to file, and the term that is used is land condemnation procedures. And according to Guam law, what Department of Public Works has to do then is, of course, they're going to have to bring that down to the legislature. The legislature is going to have to give its approval to condemn that property, and then from there, it goes to the to the court system, for the court to determine if, in fact, fair market value was was given, and that it was it was a fair deal. But during the public hearing, basically, it was kind of said, well, the project will be finished sometime in early 2013, and really, the biggest problem is the right-of-way acquisition. Well, then, all we're asking is that over the next day, you know, at some point, you've got to say, okay, this is going to be, we're going to, we're going to proceed with these actions, and at some point, you're going to have to call it and say, okay, it's not working, now we move on to the next step. And then, of course, you know, from that point on, once it gets to the legislature, they really don't have that much control over it, DPW does not, because then it really gets put in to the legislature's arena, and the actions that follow will really be dependent upon the legislature's schedule. But even with that, that is not an open-ended thing, because we do know that a public hearing will have to be held within 120 days. And then after that, of course, things, you know, hopefully, it'll be out by before the end of the term. And then after it gets out of the legislature, and it gets sent over to the court, that even becomes a lot more gray, because the court has its own schedules, and certainly, that's, you know, they do what they do, and they get to it. But but we want to at least be able to see some kind of clear action on the part of DPW, a plan that here's what we're going to do at this point, we're going to cut it, we're going to move on to the next phase, as best as we can guess, that should, you know, culminate at this point. And 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 then the other part, of course, of the bill, is that as we move along, and you find that you are really coming across a lot more obstacles than was originally thought, then we need to come back, inform the Speaker of the legislature about that matter, and it's another one of those, you know, ready, fire, aim, and then we can do whatever whatever adjustment is necessary to try and keep this process moving forward. So if nothing else, we're just trying to narrow down with this bill about trying to get a bridge completed somewhere out in early 2013, and hopefully, by providing this plan of action, then there's something a little bit more definitive that everybody can put their arms around, and that somebody, you know, everybody can can keep watch off to see how the progress is being made. Otherwise, we're probably going to, you know, if we don't have that, then we're going to go down, and in early 2013, when the bridge is not yet completed, we're right back to square one, we start all over again, and we really should have been monitoring that from the very beginning. So I certainly rise in support of this bill, and I would ask my colleagues to to support it. Thank you very much.
On the motion, are there any other speakers? Senator, do you want to close, or you want to send it down?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and to my colleagues, thank you for your support, and I ask the rest to also consider the importance of this bill. It is about accountability. In the hearing, DPW had come forward and said they don't want any more mandates, they want funding. Well, this this project is funded, so apparently, they do need mandates, because it's not been done. Six years have gone by, and residents down there are traveling back and forth on a single road, a single bridge. It's unconscionable, as they had mentioned, my colleagues had mentioned. So there needs to be accountability. This is their marine drive, like my colleagues had said. If it was up here, it would have been done yesterday. There would have been a sense of urgency there, but this is down south, so typical fashion, out of sight, out of mind. We don't drive it every day, they don't see the importance. Well, there are thousands of people that traverse that road every single day, and so it's time that something be done, and DPW be held accountable for this project, and at least tell us why it's taking so long. So this bill intends to do that and give answers to the legislature and the community as to why this project hasn't been done, and if there are further delays, it'll give those answers to the community that have to struggle with this frustration every single day. So again, I ask my colleagues to support this, and I thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion then to send, Bill 23, the third reading filed, without any objections, so ordered. Bill Number 20, I recognize Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Situus Maasi, Madam Speaker, and Manana Situus. Madam Speaker, I'd like to put Bill Number 20-31 COR as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, as introduced by myself to the third reading, and I'd like to discuss it, please.
Please, you may proceed.
Situus Maasi. Madam Speaker, this Bill Number 20-31 COR is an act relative to zoning the property consisting of two lots, which is Lot Number 2176-1-4 and Lot Number 2176-1-R5, to commercial zone, to, I mean, commercial, to allow for commercialized use of the property. These two lots, Madam Speaker, is located in the municipality of Baragata. It does, both lots is approximately 3,511 square meters and 162 square meters respectively. This lot, these two lots are owned by Far East Equipment Company, LLC. And just to get a clearer picture, Madam Speaker, I will present a copy of the map to the clerk of the legislature, so that if anyone wants to, any of my colleagues would like to see the map, it's there for their review. It is located directly across the Happy Market in Baragata. Anyone who knows where the old school spot used to be in Baragata, it was a well-known hamburger place, it's directly, which is now Happy Mark, and and this lot that we're talking about, Madam Speaker, is right across on the T-Dent site. This company, Madam Speaker, Far East Equipment Company, is proposing to build a heavy equipment dealership building on that, and for our listening audience, the the company has submitted a proposed showroom and plan to this August body during the public hearing, for their intent to provide how the showroom will look at, look like, and what they intended to sell there. Madam Speaker, it was the initial intent was to ask that this designation of zoning be a light industrial M1, but based on the committee update and the purposes of what was submitted during the public hearing, the committee felt that for the activities noted, that the commercial C zoning designation would be utilized, better utilized for this intended building plan. There was some concerns, Madam Speaker, regarding why this, why these two lots came to this, to this August body, and I want to share with you, this this land was a part of the Navy's military land return to the original landowners. It had not had its zoning designation, and by law, our August body is responsible for zoning lands that have never been zoned before. So I ask that my colleagues support me in these efforts, I humbly ask them, and support the Limteako family as they look into building a heavy equipment showroom, dealership showroom, so that they could sell heavy equipment to our residents here on Guam. So thank you very much.
On the motion, Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill, but I, more importantly, I'd like to bring attention on, I think, it's a matter of, I guess, technical terms here, line, line three, I mean, line four and line 10, where the term light industrial, parentheses, M1, that should be consistent, of course, with the commercial zone. I think that's that's an oversight, but, and I rise in support of the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So I, on line four, it says light industrial, I, that should read commercial zone, to be consistent with line 16 at the bottom, and also apply that to line 10.
On the amendment, then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
So that's on line four and line 10. On page two. Clerk, were you able to get that? On the motion, are there any other speakers? So on the motion then to send... So on the motion then to send Bill number 20, the third reading filed without any objections, so ordered. On Bill 50-31, I recognize the author, Senator Rispio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 50 be placed in the voting file with some discussion.
Consigliere.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 50 is an act to repeal the early voting service to the community. First, I want to rise to thank our Oversight Chair on Election Reform, Senator Rodriguez, for having a hearing on this bill and preparing a committee report and reporting the bill out as introduced with a recommendation to pass. I also want to rise to acknowledge the father, the author of the Early Voting Service to the Community Act, Senator Palacios, because we all agreed at that time that we have to provide whatever means necessary to have voters have the opportunity to cast their vote in the most accessible fashion ever. But as we learned in the last election, Madam Speaker, and I'm happy to also get the support from that, a good senator from Chalampago, to say that given what happened in the last election by the Guam Election Commission's own account, and they've certified that over 100 more early voting ballots were cast and the number of votes which, who actually signed up for early voting. They've said that the GEC's master logbook of signatures of early voters and the GEC's digital version of the same logbook do not contain the same number of signatures and the difference is large. Thousands of ballots cast by early and absentee voters were improperly stored in unlocked filing cabinet at the Guam Election Commission. And from the day early voting began through Election Day, they were accessible to individuals who were not GEC employees. The names of dozen, dozens of voters who cast early or absentee ballots were not marked off on precinct signature logs, leaving open the possibility that they could have voted more than once or that they may have illegally voted in their name. Madam Speaker, the GEC also certified in their own findings that the master precinct logs used at the polls on Election Day included the names of dozens of voters who were marked off as voting early or absentee, but their names do not exist on any GEC early or absentee voter list. Several people apparently voted twice in Guam's general election by casting ballots during early in-office voting and also at their respective precincts on Election Day. And so I've, I've wanted to list these findings and several others in our legislative intent so there could be a matter of public record to fully explain why any legislature would want to repeal any program that's designed to make voting accessible. I want to move in this direction, Madam Speaker, and to just repeal the early voting provision simply because we've demonstrated, as in the past election, that there's no guarantee that we can say that we do have free and fair elections here on Guam. And the fact that the current election case in the gubernatorial level is being challenged in the Superior Court just leaves a cloud over that incumbent's ability to govern if they don't have a clear mandate. And I believe there's no clear mandate right now, Madam Speaker, given all the matters and problems that happened in the last general election. So while I appreciate the idea of an early voting, I don't think we should ever, ever provide for this kind of mechanism if these ballots cannot be secured. We've all said, Madam Speaker, that ballots on the day of the election should be treated as cash, just like a bank. When you open up, when a teller opens up for the day, that teller has to have an accounting of how much cash she started with, how much cash she ended with, as well as all the bank balance receipt books. And so at the end of the day, she can reconcile. Unfortunately, Madam Speaker, and unconscionably, the Guam Election Commission did not reconcile in many of the precincts for the last general election. And that matter was complicated because of the early voting. We were also under the impression, I was under the opinion, Madam Speaker, that the Guam Election Commission would have been putting these ballots at some bank vault. So that way, on the day of the election, these ballots can be opened up and they can be put into the various precinct boxes so that they can be counted together with the votes cast on that day. But as we learned, these ballots were placed in unlocked filing cabinets, Madam Speaker, leaving the suspicious, the suspicion that something, that they gave potential and opportunity for these ballots to be tampered with. I know that that's not what I'm saying is happening, but that's what the allegations are. And so in order to remove that cloud that is before us today and will always be before us until the matter and the courts resolve one way or the other, I respectfully request that the legislature move to repeal the early voting service to the community by supporting Bill number 50. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I give a passive support of this bill. There's really no problem with the current statute. I understand, Madam Speaker, based on the problems that we encountered in the last election. It is actually the manner in which the statute was administered internally by the leadership of the Election Commission. And so with that, of course, there's a need to again firm up the administrative part of that before we continue with the statute itself. And I would support in some way, at least even reluctantly, the repeal of that to give this government time to look at that and perhaps we can revisit that later on, hopefully prior to the 2012 election. But as of now, I have no objection. I support the repealing of this statute. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Palacios on the motion. Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise to support Bill 50. But I also must say that I support Senator Palacios's initiative in establishing the early voting service to the community. And just like the previous speaker has just stated, this is something that we must work on and try to find a solution on how we can bring this back should this Bill 50 pass. Because I think the concept of having, opening up the opportunity to our people to be able to vote earlier is a good idea. However, I agree with Senator Rispio, the Majority Leader, that the procedures, the steps in place now are not efficient and effective. So this is something that, as Oversight Chair of Election Reform, that I'm committing to work with the body to make sure that we can see how we can bring this back before the 2012 election, should this measure pass by this body. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Rodriguez. On the motion, are there any other speakers? Sada Malago, Comentes? Senator Rispio? Okay, so on the motion then to send Bill 50 to the third reading filed without any objections, so ordered. I recognize Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes on Bill 68.
Madam Speaker, I move that Bill number 68-31-COR, as introduced by myself, be moved to the third reading. And I'd like to speak briefly on it.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, this bill, if passed, will solve nearly 60-year dispute in the village of Agania Heights by essentially doing two things. First is accepting the deed of property from the landowner to the government of Guam. And number two, it's granting a variance to the property. Madam Speaker, without this bill's passage, the accessibility through this road is very limited and will only allow one car to pass at a time. Emergency vehicles would have an even more difficult time accessing those in need of urgent medical care whose residence is within the vicinity of this lot. Additionally, the existing apartment units on the property will finally be considered conforming. As it was expressed in the introduced legislation, the existing apartment units have been considered non-conforming because in 1962, the government took away from the original landowner's property when they installed the sewer line at that time. In 1962, the government realigned the easement to put the, to put in place the sewer line, but did not delete the existing easement. And this cut the subject lot in half and therefore created an injustice to the landowner. Madam Speaker, the mayor of Agania Heights, Mayor Paul McDonald, has spoke about this bill and he's also in favor of this bill, as is the landowner, who the landowners are Don Hemlani and Gina Hemlani. The Agania Heights mayor and the MPC has also passed a resolution and supported this effort, Madam Speaker. So the Municipal Planning Council has been in discussions with the mayor and the community residents in reference to this concern that has been a major concern for the village residents for a very long time. The landowner is willing to deed 10 feet of his property and has committed to building a retaining wall at no expense to the government of Guam. In return, Madam Speaker, the landowner is simply asking for a setback variance which would not, which would allow for their property to be categorized as conforming. And Madam Speaker, based on that history I shared with you, I hope that my colleagues will support this effort and support the bill to accept the deed of easement and grant the variance and make the easement safe for two vehicles to pass safely in this area. So I want to take the time to thank you and ask my colleagues to please support this bill.
On the motion, Senator Guthers and then Senator Palacios.
Yeah, Madam Speaker, I don't really object to this at all. I just have a question. If the sponsor can help me. Because recently, there was some kind of exposé in the newspaper regarding lands of the family of PD and Roddy Hemlani. So my question to the sponsor, is this land really owned by these individuals or is it under the name of Roddy and PD Hemlani?
Senator, do you go to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Based on the reports submitted, Madam Speaker, this, this property is owned by Gina and Don Hemlani. And if the, if you can look at the committee reports, the map is, is attached and also the area, there is a visual on the area of the property that's to be properly granting the variance and deed it over.
Deed it over to?
The intent was to accept the deed from the land over to government of Guam and grant the variance to the property. There was some setback, non-conforming issues. And if this bill is passed into law, then it would become conforming. And that was the concern. But I do have a copy for, if they would like to see.
Fine. I just, Madam Speaker, I just wanted to make sure that we're not drawn into this land dispute. But I'm very pleased if that's the case.
We're going to take a brief.
If that's the case. Thank you.
Yep. Agania Heights. Right here. Send the committee report. Yes, we, we did get something from land management. Let me call the mayor. Yeah, go ahead and move it down and then when I get it, we can come back.
Senator, you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. Madam Speaker.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Madam Speaker, if I may, we can just go ahead and set aside and suspend this, if we can just suspend this bill until we can get the information from the Department of Land. I was just, I was just calling my office.
Okay, so the motion is to put it aside while you get some information, then objections ordered.
Exactly, it was. So the $5 charge there. 10, okay, two times 10. I still have to collect from Senator Guthers.
You're getting interest.
Yes, I'm gaining interest, you're right. Every day, $1.
What is the paper's rate here?
$1 a day.
She owns a school. I'm her principal.
It's a dollar and a $5 fine.
Okay.
I'm making your life easier up there.
We're back in session. Senator Rispio, you're recognized on Bill 88.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 88 be placed in the voting file with some discussion.
You would like to speak next?
Yeah, thank you. Madam Speaker, I've been working closely with our Oversight Chair on Election Reform, Senator Rodriguez. And this bill is another attempt to move in the area where we can reassure that we do have free and fair elections here on, on our island. And Bill 88 simply requires the Guam Election Commission to do a systematic and periodic review of certain things. And in section two, Madam Speaker, they have to do a update and review of whether or not their written checklist to be utilized during the election is, is provided for to all the precinct workers, training of GEC board members, staff, temporary workers, and volunteers. And they also have to have such checklist that, that has to be devised to ensure that workers have the supplies needed to perform their duties on Election Day, they follow standardized procedures. And this bill really provides a whole list of things that we believe that the Guam Election Commission has made great strides to try to do, but for one reason or another, for one, in that one fashion or another, we still see these gaps and those kinds of policies being implemented. What I've also seen over the years, Madam Speaker, is that the Guam Election Commission Board has taken the position that they're just going to implement the laws that the legislature's passed and the governor has signed, bills that the legislature's passed and the laws the governor's signed into law. And so if this were a bill that were passed and enacted, certainly they'll have some kind of. issues.
On the motion, Senator Palacio, recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, although I support the intent of the bill, and actually support the bill in itself, there are a little bit of concern with regards to, and as was articulated by the author of the bill, and with regards to the early voting checklist and the possible necessity of being able to do this. Madam Speaker, I caution that this body previously heard a bill that would basically repeal any statute with regards to early voting in recognition that there's currently an ongoing litigation with regards to that whole process. My concern, ma'am, and with regards to having this here, is if we're going to recognize and we're going to repeal that early voting process and actually look towards maybe some possible guidance with regards to the ongoing litigation, I think it'd be prudent in our part to go ahead and hold off on being able to task the commission, being able to put the checklist, because this checklist may in fact actually change as a result of the outcome of that ongoing litigation. Not to say, Madam Speaker, that later on down the road, yes, if we find that is, you know, all the Ts have been crossed and the Is dotted with regards to early voting, that this body can come back in, come back at a later date and put back and bring back the early voting process. I would prefer that we hold off in being able to establish that checklist until we recognize where are those pitfalls, if there were any pitfalls, and any legal guidance that may be provided in being able to do this to include the preparation or the construction of a checklist. So that said, Madam Speaker, my proposal, my proposed amendment is starting on page, on line, page five, starting on line 11, basically subsection B, early voting checklist, all the way through page six, line five, is that we delete this section.
So your motion then is on page five, line 11, lines 11 to 17 to delete, continue on to page six from line one, lines one to line five.
Yes, ma'am.
On the amendment, Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, although I support the intent of the bill, and actually support the bill in itself, there are a little bit of concern with regards to, and as was articulated by the author of the bill, and with regards to the early voting checklist and the possible necessity of being able to do this. Madam Speaker, I caution that this body, okay, previously heard a bill that would basically repeal any statute with regards to early voting in recognition that there's currently an ongoing litigation with regards to that whole process. My concern, ma'am, and with regards to having this here, is if we're going to recognize and we're going to repeal that early voting process and actually look towards maybe some possible guidance with regards to the ongoing litigation, I think it'd be prudent in our part to go ahead and hold off on being able to task the commission, being able to put the checklist, because this checklist may in fact actually change as a result of the outcome of that ongoing litigation. Not to say, Madam Speaker, that later on down the road, yes, if we find that is, you know, all the Ts have been crossed and the Is dotted with regards to early voting, that this body can come back in, come back at a later date and put back and bring back the early voting process. I would prefer that we hold off in being able to establish that checklist until we recognize where are those pitfalls, if there were any pitfalls, and any legal guidance that may be provided in being able to do this to include the preparation or the construction of a checklist.
So that said, Madam Speaker, my proposal, my proposed amendment is starting on page, on line, page five, starting on line 11, basically subsection B, early voting checklist, all the way through page six, line five, is that we delete this section.
So your motion then is on page five, line 11, lines 11 to 17 to delete, continue on to page six from line one, lines one to line five.
Yes, ma'am.
On the amendment, Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I understand that concern, but in this section, it requires an early voting checklist. It simply says, "Should Guam statutes permit early voting, an early voting checklist must be prepared and utilized during a legally authorized early voting period prior to election day." And it lists certain things that the checklist should include and provides some parameters. I think rather than deleting that section, maybe on line 14, we can, after the word "include," we can put comma, but not limited to the following. If we make no mention of our early voting process, Madam Speaker, and as I said before, that we've seen the Election Commission take the position that they're just implementing the law and that they would do whatever the legislature passes and whatever the governor signs in law, and by not mentioning any idea of early voting process, Madam Speaker, maybe it might not move them in this direction. So I rise to object to that amendment and ask, maybe after you dispose of that amendment, to consider an amendment that will include but not limit to the following. So whatever the court finds in that court procedures, that the Election Commission can also incorporate those provisions in this section.
Senator Palacio?
Madam Speaker, that said, I, you know, I tend to be with the author of this thing. There's some compromise that can be present.
So you're going to withdraw your amendment?
I'm going to draw my amendment.
Okay, so on the motion to withdraw the amendment, no objections are ordered, and you're going to proffer the amendment then instead is to add the words, but limited to the following?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so that will be on page five, line 14. After the words, "The checklist shall include," remove the colon. That sounds so gross.
But not limited to the following.
Comma, but not limited to the following.
Yes, okay. I know yesterday we had some concerns that we were moving too fast and the clerks weren't able to get all of the amendments. I want to make it clear, page five, line four, the checklist shall include...
Page five, line 14.
Yeah, line 14. The checklist shall include...
Comma.
Comma, but not limited to the following.
Yes.
Okay, clerks were able to get that without any objections and so ordered. On the motion, there being none, oh, yes, esta. Senor Consigui, the Masada.
And ta 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 nu esti bill nu, Madam Speaker, uli na nu ta i bill, asanani i Guam Election Commission hafa sha, nishito matso gweza, hafa pa ma recono shi sha na punto. Lo mina ga hit kalan nu ta za gini nu, nu pa ma dirihi na naen na pa ma tutu, nusti na na kla shen sozo. First, nu, I would like to add a new Section 5, and I guess I will have to write it out, but a new Section 5 with respect to an implementation date that within 90 days, something to the effect that within 90 days after enactment of this bill, that the Guam Election Commission shall initiate its review.
Okay, Senator, I'm going to take a brief recess to allow you to prepare your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to move this to the third reading file for discussion.
So the substituted version?
Yes, ma'am.
And would you like to speak on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the chairwoman of the Committee on Education and Public Libraries, our honorable speaker and her staff for getting this bill on the floor. Our offices have been working very closely together, and I believe that this substitute version reinforces what the original intent was. I want to again thank the speaker for her diligence on this piece of legislation. Now, Bill 95 will increase the number of years a public school student is required to take tomorrow language and culture courses. I don't believe the current requirement is enough, and that's what prompted me to introduce this bill. Much like the original bill, this substitute version requires tomorrow courses for all three years in middle school and an additional year in high school. The substitute, however, includes a timeline which allows the curriculum changes to take place gradually. This gives the Department of Education time to develop and expand the curriculum to meet this mandate. This, I believe, will bolster the tomorrow language and culture in our school system. Now, is it guaranteed that this will strengthen the proficiency in the tomorrow language? I can't say with any degree of certainty that that will happen, but I believe that this bill is a step in the right direction. These days, our children have demonstrated a strong desire to learn the tomorrow language and our culture, and I believe that this will give them the tools and the resource or the requirement for DOE to provide that to them. Now, some say that this bill will decrease the number of core subjects that a student will take, such as math, science, and English. I believe it doesn't. They also say that it will increase the time that we allot for a school day, but I don't, it will not do that as well. Ideally, the additional tomorrow classes will replace some of the electives that the students currently choose, but it will still really make sure that all of the core subjects are intact. So, Madam Speaker, I would like to see, I would like to ask my colleagues to support this measure, because as we look toward the military buildup and the unprecedented growth that we expect to take place on this island, I believe that we really have to make a strong effort to bolster our tomorrow language and our culture, to preserve what we have and make sure that our culture is not lost. So I ask my colleagues to support this bill, and I thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Tyrone, Speaker Wampad, you're recognized on the main motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill Number 95. We didn't report it out last term because we were really trying to work with the Department of Education to ensure then that we would be able, that they would actually be able to gradually implement, you see, the requirement of, or the expansion of the tomorrow language and culture curriculum in our public schools. And initially, if we were to do it all at one time, of course, then the impact would be great. But by doing it gradually, then it gives the schools an opportunity then to actually look at, you know, the courses that they offer and also look and re, actually, they're going to have to redo their master schedules. And I know that many times we always say that when we add all these additional courses, that what is it going to replace? And it really doesn't need to, in essence, even replace any one of the courses, because if you, if you look at the scheduled day, and I say this primarily because this is in the middle school, and we used to, I don't, not quite sure now, but there used to be blocks of schedules where you would have then the language with reading and then you have the math with science. I know a lot has changed since that time. Some schools, however, it is required that yes, tomorrow language be offered in the sixth grade, and some of school principals have actually changed that and started to make it a semester course rather than a year-long course. I know that when I was in the system, all sixth graders had to take tomorrow language and culture for a whole year. It wasn't for a semester. Some have gotten creative and decided to eliminate that and make it only a semester-long course and started to add other elective courses. So what they really need to do then is go back to the board policy where it actually says that already, although we did include it here in the sixth grade, but that's... that should have been in place already. So, if they're going to make any changes, they need to go back and make those changes accordingly by board policy. Now, for the school year 2013, for the seventh graders, and then for school year 20, I mean, 2014 and 15, then that will be for the eighth graders, and then it moves up in the grades. Madam Speaker, I attended a conference or a discussion with several Chomor language teachers that came out of this three-day convention tomorrow, last October, and they were very excited about that conference, and they knew that there are some serious problems in our schools in terms of actually teaching Chomor language. And, you know, they're saying, and they're hearing, the parents also asked this, and children asked this, is that why is it that they're really not learning Chomor when it's mandated in our schools? And although this does not really address right now the elementary level, but we're definitely working with the department and with the Chomor Studies Division to address that because, and I'll just give you an example, and I know it doesn't address the middle school right now, but it definitely is affected when our feeder schools are not teaching as mandated by law. They are only teaching, they're told, at least 20 minutes. But this is the scenario I would present to you, that these Chomor language teachers will go and pick up the children from whatever classrooms they're coming from, and usually, there's a five-minute passing period from one wing of the building to another, because many times, these teachers, these Chomor language teachers are actually rotating. They don't have a permanent classroom. So, they need to go and pick up these children and take them to wherever their designated classroom is. And then by the time they take them back at the end of the 20 minutes that they have, and then they take roll, really, in essence, you're lucky if you have any one Chomor language teacher who's going to be able to teach for 10 minutes for that particular group of students that they're teaching. So, ask yourself, if you're only going to have a 10-minute, five to 10-minute lesson on any foreign language, you're not going to be able to leave that year being able to speak it, at least in a conversation with others. So, that's the situation that we have currently. In the testimony that came from the superintendent's office is that there is a possibility in which, and that's what we're really looking at, is then extending that time to 30 minutes for Chomor language teachers in the sixth grade to be able to teach. And that's a request by the Chomor language teachers. Now, in the middle school, like I said earlier, it is already, and it should be, and whatever courses that are being offered in lieu of the Chomor language in the sixth grade, that they need to go back to that. So, that needs to be enforced. And the board, I've already discussed this with some of the board members, that they need to go back and look at their board policy and the courses that are required per grade, because there's a great deviating from what the board policy says. And individuals have gotten very creative to be able to offer a lot of programs that are not even part of the policy, board policy, or not even mandated by law. And I think that we need to be able to make sure that those two are being followed. The law is being followed, and board policy is being followed, but somebody has to enforce that. I believe, as well as the author of this bill, and I'm sure even every single individual in this hall agrees, that if we don't do something now, then we stand to lose a lot. And I think that we are very fortunate that we're able to, through all these conferences that we've been having, and then the growing awareness of how then we may lose our language and culture, our practices and our traditions, because as the community becomes more diluted, then, of course, there will be, you see less and less of Chomor being used. Then, of course, as you know, although we may have two languages, Chomor and English, as our official languages, we all know that in the business world, it is English. And people have said that in order for our language to thrive, it has to be economically, you know, beneficial as well. And, you know, that's something that I know you yourself has been very conscious of, and have been working even with tourism to make sure that, you know, we continue then to perpetuate. And I'm really happy to see that, that since 95, when we first were in here, Senator Ada and Speaker Ben and I were here at that time, and it was very difficult to try to get tourism, you know, into the community, out of Tumon and into our villages, where our culture, language, and our practices, our tradition, you know, are being used on a daily basis. So, that I know you do understand. In our high school, it is to make it mandatory in the ninth grade, and then again, gradually continue to accelerate the time in which this can be done. Now, there is, and sometimes you might say, well, maybe economically, we might not be able to do that, because we have to be able then to provide, you know, the money for this. But there is also then a discussion here that, you know, the Board of Education can ensure then and try to maintain this in our schools, and that, you know, if they are unable to do it for that particular time, then, of course, they can still, you know, come back to the legislature and then so that we would continue the dialogue with them to be able then to provide additional fundings as we move forward. So, I believe that, you know, this, it's good. It's preparing everyone. It's allowing our schools to plan ahead, and sometimes that's something we don't do, and I think it's important. So, we can anticipate that this is something that's going to happen in a couple of years, then let's really start, you know, working at it. You know, we did that with school sizes. We did that with classroom sizes, and, you know, we start to plan, and every time now we build and develop, we take those things into consideration. And so, that would also hold true when it comes to, you know, to the curriculum. And I just really, I really look forward to this being implemented. I look forward to seeing then more and more of our children, everyone, doesn't matter, to pick up another language, because it's great to be bilingual, and it's even really much better if you're trilingual. And it just does a lot for a child to be able to speak another language. I think it just makes you, it puts you up at another level academically. And I just think that, you know, and a lot of times, we say that we don't, but no matter what it is, pick up a second language, and it would just, it would be just much better for you, whether it's, you know, whatever the language is. I mean, I can't say, but whatever the world languages are, I think it's great that everyone should pick up another language. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Situs Massey here. Speaker Wampad. Anybody else wishing to speak on the same? Senator Dennis, and then Senator Chris.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this legislation. However, Madam Speaker, I don't know if the protection, the preservation, and the promotion of the Chomor language and culture should be limited to just the public schools. And, you know, what I want to do is see how we could expand this program into the private schools. And I don't know if this is something that we can do via an amendment in this legislation, but I think it's something that needs to be done. And also, I know we talked about gradually incorporating this initiative. I still feel, though, that it's something that should start, if we're going to make, put an extra effort like what we're doing today, it should start early on. You know, I have a son who's four years old, and he's going to be kindergarten soon. And it's known that when, you know, during the early childhood days, that's when you get a lot of, and Senator Eileen here would know that, would get a lot of retention, and a lot of, the efforts that we put into our children are better served when they are much younger. And preserving the Chomor language and culture is something very important to me. And so, this is something that, Madam Speaker, I want to ask if we can take a short recess to figure out, this is something that we can incorporate with public schools, private schools as well.
And take a brief recess.
The legislature is back in session. I understand that there are a couple of amendments right now that are being worked on. So, what we're going to do is take this early lunch recess, but we'll be back early at 1:00 this afternoon for a recess. And Senator Tyrone, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to request that we put off Bill 95's discussion until tomorrow. My colleagues are working on an amendment for discussion, and so perhaps we could take this up again tomorrow?
Yes. Okay. So, on the motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized on Bill Number 96. Okay, we're going back to 68. Okay, so on 68, Senator.
Situs Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before we suspended discussion on Bill Number 68, one of my colleagues had talked about the warranty, wanting the deeds to the property and making sure who the real owner is.
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you very much. Thank you for the brief recess. As we look over the legislation and have a lot of the questions answered in reference to the law owners and the reasoning and the need for the widening of the road so that emergency vehicles can go through, I'm going to ask, Madam Speaker, that we move to suspend this bill as I work closely with legal counsel to work with the legislative action on the commitment that the property owners have committed to do in order to make this project work for both the residents within that vicinity and the government. So if you could just ask your indulgence, please, if we can move to suspend it until the amendment is made.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized on Bill Number 96.
Okay, we're going back to 68. Okay, so on 68, Senator. Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before we suspended discussion on Bill Number 68, one of my colleagues had talked about the warranty, wanting the deeds to the property and making sure who the real owner is. The Hemlani, Vinat Hemlani and Yoshida Hemlani is husband and wife, and they have a deed giving to Gina Hemlani, who's a part of Bill 68. So it's a brother and sister exchange of property. Madam Speaker, also, the mayor, who is here in the public hearing room with us today, shared with us a letter, and it was addressed at the time to, an urgent letter, addressed to Mr. Leon Garo, to the Department of Public Works, and it noted that he attached a picture displays the collapsed retaining wall at Federico Drive, making the street unsafe to drive on. And he was asking, it says, "Please make the necessary repairs to make the street safe once again for the many residents that travel in this area. Likewise, please let our office know if there is anything we can do to help assist in the immediate repairs." And the mayor had noted, "Your most expeditious response and immediate action within this matter will be greatly appreciated," and it was signed by the mayor. And as noted, Madam Speaker, the property belongs to the Hemlani's, and they're giving it to the government. And in that effort, for that effort, they're asking that a variance be granted, setback requirements on the variance be granted to them. And I do have the mayor that's here, if anybody would like to ask him any questions outside, and also the father of the Hemlani children is also here.
I know there was a question then earlier about...
Yeah, there's also a property here, the Pacific American Title Research in Escrow, and they have documentation here that they just gave me in reference to the meters in question.
So we're going to just take a brief recess to allow members then to review that. Okay.
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you very much, and thank you for the brief recess. As we look over the legislation and have a lot of the questions answered in reference to the law owners and the reasoning and the need for the widening of the road so that emergency vehicles can go through, I'm going to ask, Madam Speaker, that we move to suspend this bill as I work closely with legal counsel to work with the legislative action on the commitment that the property owners have committed to do in order to make this project work for both the residents within that vicinity and the government. So if you could just ask your indulgence, please, if we can move to suspend it until the amendment is made.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Rodriguez is not here. I'm going to move to Speaker Ben on Bill Number 108.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 108 is a bill that was introduced at the request of one of our residents of Guam who wanted to and requested his own change for a piece of property that he has indebted to. The property is located across Marine Drive from the Kentucky Fried Chicken Machete Plaza intersection with a traffic light on the other side of Marine Drive on the village side. And within the village side, right there, parallel to Marine Drive, is Buena Vista Avenue, I believe it's called. And in the area where it's at, you currently have multifamily units as well as commercial units, restaurants, hair salons and such. And this is a lot that exists in between those apartment buildings and the other commercial centers. And the gentleman, Mr. Del Rosario, and his wife Carol, had requested that the legislature assist them in rezoning their property to sea, and their desire is to build a small professional building for a daughter that's currently working and getting her master's in tax, working in Hawaii, that is planning to come home and practice here. We sent letters out to all of the departments and agencies for their position on it and received no comments back from them and no objections. We also sent a letter to the mayor advising her of the proposal and the bill introduced in the legislature, and the mayor came back with a letter supporting the rezoning. Once again, it's an elderly couple who wants to prepare a place for their daughter who's coming back, and the facility that they want to build is a small professional office building, and it is sandwiched right now in between the lot itself, in between other commercial establishments, and an apartment unit along that major interior roadway within the village of Dedido. And so we'd like to ask for the support of the legislature on behalf of the resident of Dedido that is wishing to do this. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion?
So I'd like to move the bill to third reading.
So on the motion then, to move Bill 108 to third reading without any objections, so ordered. Senator Panglinen on Bill 109.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is another lot that's owned by the same couple. They have two daughters. And this lot is located along the major thoroughfare to Finagaja and Niktams area. It's along Route 3. It fronts Route 3, and the property that they're requesting to rezone, again, is a small lot. They have another daughter who's in med school. And the property actually is across the street, across Route 3, from what site has been designated for the construction of the new hospital, the private hospital. And so this property is along that major area. It's along the major thoroughfare, and they're requesting for a commercial zone. As you know, Madam Speaker, the properties in that general area, if you're going towards Niktams, on the left-hand side of the street through the Dos Amontes, rezoning plan there, almost all of the properties fronting Route 3A are zoned commercial. And so this property is on the other side of the street, and it is in between other properties that have been zoned M1, actually, in that general area. So the Del Rosarios, who has another daughter who's going to be also returning back from med school, her internship, want to build a small clinic that will allow their daughter to practice medicine in her own building rather than renting. And so, given the nature of their request, given the nature of the zones that have been provided for that general area, the commercial zone is very much consistent, it being along the major thoroughfare and it being on the other side and bordered by other properties that allow commercial and industrial activity. So we're requesting, again, they're requesting the assistance of the legislature for this rezoning request, and I'm asking my colleagues to please consider it on their behalf. And I'd like to move it to third reading.
Senator Tom Ada on the motion.
Madam Speaker, I, you know, I support Bill 108, which is already down the voting file, and I support the intent of 109. Quite frankly, I'm a little disturbed by the fact that, oh, this is because somebody's got a daughter coming back to set up shop and all that stuff. And if that's the justification for this, then we should put it in here that the property is being rezoned, and if the daughter doesn't come back to set it up, to set up shop, then the deal is off. But, you know, I guess my point is, I just, you know, if there's good reason to rezon it, rezon it. But I'm afraid that, you know, so I'm just, I guess I'm just expressing my annoyance that, you know, we're using the little old lady and little man has got a daughter coming back to set up shop, and, you know, and if that's a justification, then it should go in here, that provision in here that this land is going to be rezoned conditioned upon, in fact, the building being set up. But, so I just want to express that. But putting that aside, I will still support the bill because I think there's good justification for it. You know, it's a good location for a commercial type of activity, and on that basis, I will certainly give my support, but not on the, you know, the emotional, you know, the daughter's coming back, she's going to set up shop and all that stuff, because it could very well be that the daughter may change her mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Ada on the motion. Senator Chris Duñez, oh, Chris Duñez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I was moved to comment because, you know, partly because of the retiring speaker and because, maybe I'm projecting here, I know this is not a public hearing, but I'm working on legislation right now, and I know this has been discussed in this body many times, and especially when these issues come up. Sometimes they're controversial. I trust the author. I know he's got a good heart, and I know that he understands this process. He has a deep passion for land, and I share that passion. But sometimes I really think that, I've received letters as the Director of Department of Land Management referred to planning, and I've seen the responses that they give out and that they produce. Because, Madam Speaker, actually, the Planning Division of Department of Land Management is truly, truly represents what the Guam Land Use Commission ends up doing. They take all that information from the public hearings, from the whole process, and really even to the other proposals of legislation today, the Ganya Heights situation. I know that very well because that was brought to the attention a number of times. What I'm leading up to, Madam Speaker, is I think that this body at some point is going to have to, or should, and legislation is coming out soon, to use the Guam Land Use Commission and its requirements of the Planning Division to respond and to give the conditions upon which this body, we as senators with that power, to rezon property, engage in that activity. Madam Speaker, I've even heard you on this very floor discuss those issues. And so I, again, will support this legislation, understanding and knowing the vetting process that the retiring speaker goes through. But I think it's high time, and I took this opportunity to speak on this bill for this purpose, that we really engage the Department of Land Management, the Planning Division, the Guam Land Use Commission, to really only allow us to expedite the process moving forward when it comes to using the legislative process to rezon property. Fundamentally, I believe, so that we protect all when this process goes forward, that the Department of Land Management should have an opportunity to comment and to put in conditions so that we can ensure that we take care of all of the people of Guam, the surrounding landowners, when we utilize this process. So as I said, I will support the legislation. I will support, Madam Speaker, your bill, having sat through the public hearing and understanding the process. But at some point, we are going to have to, for transparency and just for good due process, I believe, bring that process to our body so that we can put some safeguards in place. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this bill, Madam Speaker.
Go into Senator Duñez. I know that I have on the bill, I have Speaker Wampat, and then I have Senator Guthertz. On the motion. Speaker, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, with the exception of the new members here, but yes, since I've been in this legislature, this has been one issue that, you know, I look at very carefully in making a decision to either vote for, you know, a zoning or a rezoning. And I say that primarily because of the fact that we have, and this body created, land management, and land management has specific responsibilities. They have a process in which then anyone wanting to rezon a piece of property would actually, you know, go there. And I still believe in that process because of several reasons. One is, is that they would have to make sure that the owners of that property to be rezoned would be contacted, because if it's a residential area that may be rezoned to a commercial or light industrial, whatever the rezoning is, is to make sure that the landowners will still feel that, one, that, you know, it would complement either the area that they're at, two, that it would, you know, not make it, of course, make it appear as if though it has no semblance of any type of zoning, like a hotspot of different activities that are taking place. But I think what's really more important here, and that's always the concern I have, is whether these areas that are being zoned, rezoned, have the sufficient infrastructure in place, such as water and sewer, and even for utilities. Water and sewer are, I think, for me, are far more important than even, let's say, power, because we're talking about these properties up north. And we all know that our water wells are all in the north. And we know that many of our properties have been, if it's in an area where you don't have sewage, then you're going to have to have properties that are at least half an acre so that you'll be able then to have sufficient land to be able to go in and have a leaching field and an accepting tank, until such time then that the government's able to go in and then provide this. Because it's important that, you know, when we have all of our drinking water coming from there, we want to make sure that the health and safety of our people are first and foremost. So to me, when I look at these, I consider a lot of those questions. And the reason why I like it to go through the process is because, like I said, they would contact the fire department, the police department, to make sure that an ambulance is also able to go in, emergency vehicles can access the property. You want to make sure, yes, the GWA, GPA also are responding so that, again, to make sure that the infrastructures are in place. You know, you want to make sure that the neighbors also are going to be happy, you know, about that. You want to contact EPA, Public Works. There's a whole slew of departments and agencies that are important to go through this whole process to make sure then that it is in the best interest of the community. More so, really, I think the health and safety of our community is critical. When it comes to the legislature, and I've seen this in the past, that sometimes, you know, that process does not happen at all. I do know, and I have to commend, of course, Speaker Ben, who's been chairing this committee because he feels this as strongly as I do and that he's made the efforts to send all of the information out to those departments and agencies to, you know, try to get some responses. I would also like to let you know is that, and my colleagues here were surprised this was another term, where I actually had introduced a bill to do such a zoning. It had no zoning and was to give it a zoning. But I felt very uncomfortable in even reporting it out at the time I had worked with the chairman, that was Speaker Ben. We sent out letters, I did the exact same thing, sent out letters. It took a while, as a matter of fact, that the guy said to me, I could have actually gone through land management and the process would have been a lot faster than the legislature because I wanted to hear from these departments and agencies. And sometimes they don't respond because I've heard them say, what for? You guys are going to go ahead and zone it anyway so it doesn't matter what we say. And I know I read one of the committee reports because we do have several of these bills on the agenda for this rezoning, and land management's just said that, you know, we feel that you shouldn't be doing this, we can do it. Now, there is, of course, one type of zoning that we have to do and that land management can't, is that when properties are returned to the original landowners and there are no zoning, then yes, it is the responsibility of this legislature is to give it a zoning. So, you know, with all that, that, you know, in mind, of course, I like to always ask that we seriously, you know, give a lot of consideration when we do this because, and we're the only ones, really, who can do this besides, and quickly, of course, and with no cost. But then there is a process and I, sometimes I'm feeling that if we don't want to do that, we want to take it all upon ourselves to do this, then why in the world then do we have a land management or the Land Use Commission? And I know you may not, no one may not want to hear this story, of course, but, you know, and I understand where the chairman of the committee's coming from when, you know, there are family members that, you know, will eventually be returning. And I have to admit that I have a property as well myself and I had moved to have that property rezoned. I didn't come to the legislature. I have friends in the legislature that I could easily have asked them to do it. But I chose not to because I better, I better, I don't know, I don't want to use that cliche because I never get it right. But, you know, I don't want to go and talk about something like this and then turn around and do the opposite. So I went to land management and I went through the whole process and I had my property also rezoned because it was for the exact same reason. My daughter was going to school, she was going to get her degree, she's going to be an epidemiologist, she wants to come back, she wants to practice here in Guam as well. And I have this piece of property for her to practice so we don't have to go out and lease. Unfortunately, like one of the previous speakers saying is that if that was going to be my reason, of course, for doing this, then, and if I was, and I like that idea, of course, is that if properties are not being used for the specific purposes that they were given to us and at a specific timeframe, then yes, it should revert back to what it was. But, and if I had gone through the legislature, of course, that property would have been, again, rezoned back to what it was because my daughter still hasn't returned home, so. But since I did it through land management, that can happen. But the idea is there, of course, is something for us to seriously, you know, consider. It's the same thing, Madam Speaker, when we talk about some of these properties that we want to lease, Shamora Land Trust lands that we want to lease for forever, so to speak, and nothing ever gets done. I know that in some bills or laws in the past has done that and it has reverted back. The federal government is notorious for that, that when they give properties back to the government of Guam and we don't develop it for the purpose that we set, they set where we should develop it for, it goes through the reversionary process again. You know, I think that is something that we should learn ourselves as well so that then we don't just, you know, continue to do all these rezoning and do all these leasing of properties and then nothing happens. Or they use it for a purpose other than what we set, what we stipulated on and what we reported in our committee report, that that's what is supposed to happen. And that would take me back to that one particular property that I was asked to rezon. And I was, and when I heard exactly what the activities were after, this is after the fact, and then, you know, I said, never again. Because then I was actually lied to and I would never want to do that. And that's why I think this is something we can seriously consider because I know that in the books and our standing, and the law, rather, like, for example, the, sometimes when we're going to sell strips of property that are unusable, there's a requirement of, you know, two appraisals before that's done. I know there was another bill that was introduced by one of our colleagues, I think that will be entertaining here, is saying the exact same thing. So it's something to really seriously think about in the future. I know everyone is listening. I know that the chairman is listening as well and he knows how, you know, I feel about this. I think you all know that as well. It used to be, at least when Senator Brown was here, Joanne Brown, is that she and Speaker Ben and I would always take this one position about, you know, zoning or rezoning of properties. But I know as time goes by, we've actually changed some of our position. We consider, of course, you know, everything. One other thing that we always do, and Senator Tom Ada has brought it to our attention when we've done this, is that we want to make sure that we always have maps so that we can actually see where these properties are. Some of us have actually gone out, I know I've gone out to some of these places to actually see it for myself, to make sure. And I'm hoping that in this particular case, I'm looking at the map, but sometimes, you know, not knowing where these properties are at, and I'm hoping that the Mr. Chairman, the Mr. Speaker here would actually tell us whether, one, the infrastructure of these properties, or this property that we're talking about, that, you know, what's the situation there? Because in the map, I see that it has been surveyed. I mean, it's nicely done, of course. You start out with eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 lots and then lot 13 is what is being addressed here, whether that too then is, I mean, the water and sewer is accessible to this particular lot. So, Madam Speaker, I want to hear what the chairman's going to say before I decide how I'm going to vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have on the list Senator Guthertz and Senator Palacios. Senator Guthertz?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. You know, in listening to the discussion on the bill, well, I will support the bill. However, some discussions sort of implied and said, really, that we need to move things over to land management and try to get out of this business of doing this. And, you know, I intend to agree with that under certain circumstances, but I also want to point out that there are still problems in the way the Land Use Commission handles these zone changes. And one of the biggest problems we saw lately was the action of the court that stopped the current continuation of work on the Emerald condominium project because apparently, based on the judge's order, the commission, the Land Use Commission, did not follow and insist on the requirements being met for notification of adjacent landowners to that particular location which was cited for the condominiums. So even the Land Use Commission makes mistakes and sometimes has to be corrected by a court of law. I don't know, I haven't heard if the Attorney General's Office has appealed that decision. I haven't heard, has not been reported in the media. But obviously, there's a problem here. You have this multimillion-dollar project that was stopped because citizens' rights in the community were not honored with reference to the plans for that project. I'm not sure where it's going or where it's going to go. But I think there's a need not just to look at the idea of the legislature not participating in these rezonings, but we need to look at also how the Land Use Commission is operating and how its decisions are being made. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthertz. Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Chairman and I rise in support of the bill for the rezoning, including, of course, the Bill 108, now Bill 109. My perspective with respect to rezoning, I mean, Mr. Speaker, the so-called spot zoning, I never shy from doing that. The fact that the Territorial Land Use Commission is established, that is a creation of this body, Mr. Speaker. But that should not prevent any member of this body to directly address the issue, the need of a member of this community to address such a thing. In fact, that we're supposed to do that. But previous legislature created that. I cannot understand why, but I cannot understand why the Territorial Land Use Commission, what can it do that we cannot do? And so, but the fact that it's established should not prevent a member of this body, and I will say again, I would never be shy from supporting a so-called spot zone for the reason, for a good purpose, and that should be the bottom line. And I do respect the Land Use Commission. But again, they have a job to do, we have a job to do. And in this case, it should not matter how it's dealt with, it has to be addressed. For the purpose for which it is being proposed, Bill 109, Mr. Speaker, would just fit in. This would allow the property owner to make better use or increase use of their property. And we should support that. We should support that because that's really the essence of investing in a little property here and there so that one day it can help us, it can help our family. Oh, this is that day for that property in Bill 109, when this body can consider that. And again, the fact that the Land Use Commission is established should not really be any reason why we should not act on this. We can do what the Land Use Commission can do, but it should not be anything other than that's another avenue and spot zoning is the other avenue. And I try to understand the perspective of previous legislature, why they would want to create, surrogate, a substitute of this body to do what this body is actually elected to do and it's empowered to do. And that's my perspective. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Madam Secretary, when you relinquished the chair, was that to speak on this bill? Okay, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chair, with regards to the conversation on this bill, Mr. Chairman, in support of the legislation. And I want to speak to the process because there seemed to have been some concern with regards to some of the process. I can tell firsthand in working with a good chair on also a proposed land bill that he and I are both working on, that the process that his committee has implemented, to be able to vet some of these concerns are, I would, in my opinion and in my observation, would help to answer a lot of the question, a lot of the concerns that could or that should be brought up and could be brought up with regards to any deliberations and whether or not this body should rezon, approve the request to rezon certain properties. So in speaking to the process that I'm very much familiar with, I can speak with all sincerity and with all confidence that this process, the process that the committee has for vetting these concerns and vetting these requests so that it does not pose a future concern down the line. Granted, you know, that there could be legislation that would codify the process in itself so that it doesn't change from one chair or one legislature to the next. I will say that with regards to, most especially, and I'm speaking to this bill here in recognition of the processes that I have to go through with another bill, similar legislation I have within the committee, that if the two, if using informatic consistency, using the same parameters to be able to vet this before it's brought to the floor, that a lot of these concerns are brought. That, you know, I'm sure, and as I was a member to, during the public hearing, when these bills were heard, I'm sure that, yes, you take into consideration what the owner would want to do, but I think at the end of the day, it's the committee's responsibility and I'm sure the committee took that responsibility and seized that responsibility, that if it was going to be for commercial use for the purpose as stated in the committee or for any other purpose, that the property is set for and can be rezoned, it has the proper infrastructure, it has the, in as far as the approvals, if you will, from the different entities and the recognition from the different entities that this process is going through, that those things are met before it comes to the floor. So with regards to this legislation, Madam Speaker, I am in support of this legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Blas on the motion. Senator Rodriguez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 109. I want to echo the sentiments of Senator Palacios earlier and just state that I too support this process of being able to rezon properties and especially for this particular legislation, Madam Speaker, Bill 109, as it says, the intent of this is to, is for the purpose of building a facility for medical services. And anytime now when we talk about expanding our healthcare on island and ensuring access to our people, then it's always a good thing. So I support the practice that this legislature, you know, has the, has the authority and the, you know, is empowered to make these zone changes, but most especially because this particular zone change that we're doing is for benefit of our people. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion. Okay, Speaker Ben, you would like to close?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am Speaker, I want to thank everyone who got up to speak and I apologize if I offended anybody because I'm doing this for a little old man who wants to help his daughter come back. That was just side information. That's not the reason why I'm doing this. You know, I'm doing this because I believe that that zone that's to be designated is consistent with the general area. I don't care if the old man has $10. I don't care if the old man has 10 daughters coming back. If it's not consistent with the area, I'm just not gonna do it. So I apologize if, you know, I'm trying to tug on, I wasn't trying to tug on heartstrings here, it was just a side note. I mean, you know, when we're getting up and saying, hey, we're doing it for Matson, it's okay, I'm just wanting to know who we're doing it for. I thought it would be an interesting thing to know that that's how this request reached this floor, just as that's how the Matson request reached this floor, or the Far East Equipment reached this floor. It's, who are we doing it for? For me, this elderly man and his wife came to me, but as I mentioned when I introduced the bill, that the property fronts Route 3A, a six-lane, five-lane highway. On the other side, we had just rezoned the entire, I think, 2,000 acres there, maybe more, and we rezoned the front part across the street from this little old man's property, C. The back part are two, M1, C-zone, for the entire Punta dos Amantes area. This property is located across the street from that. Down the street from this property, we rezoned two lots, M1, and we didn't have the same kind of discussion that we're having on this one-acre lot. The impact of rezoning this to a C in a one-acre lot is miniscule compared to the impact that we had when this body discussed very, very sparsely rezoning those two lots that are over 10 acres, 20 acres. We didn't have the same kind of detailed discussion, the same kind of concern voiced for this little old man's lot. So it was just a side note, you know, so that we know who we're doing it for, Madam Speaker. And the property, as I mentioned again, the reason why I decided to listen to the gentleman and his wife, what his plans were, and then I said, is it consistent with the zoning in the area today? You know, we get criticized for spot zoning. This is not spot zoning. Spot zoning really is when you have R1 all around you and you plop a C right in the middle without any planning. That's spot zoning because putting a C when everything else is R1 is inconsistent. That's spot zoning. This is zoning a piece of property, upgrading the zoning, consistent with the other zone and uses in the general area. So across the street is C, down the street is C, up the street is M on a one-acre lot. So I felt, I'm gonna support this old man. There's no need to send this guy out to the T L U C, hire a consultant, spend $10,000, $20,000 so that he can rezone his 4,000 square meter lot for something that his neighbor can do, for something that the guy across the street can do. It's the same with his slot in the Derrito, right next to him, two doors down, two lots down, apartment building, commercial building, his lot, two lots up, commercial building, commercial building, commercial building. Now, I'm gonna send, the old man says, hey, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna change the character of the community, of the general area, by asking you to zone my lot C, because the character is already C here, multiple family dwelling here. So when that exists, sewer, water, paved road, driveway, ambulance can go in, we know, we send, so why am I gonna say to this old man now, you know, Matson can come and we can save them, you know, $20,000, $30,000 because they only make 60 million a year, but you, I'm gonna send you to T L U C because I'm concerned about what the effect this would have on the surrounding community? And by the way, if your daughter don't come home, I'm gonna change that law back to a, to an R2. It's consistent with the uses of that area. If it wasn't, I would not introduce the bill, I would've told the old man, I'm sorry, I don't think it's appropriate, I don't, I could not support that. I would've told him. One daughter, two daughters, 10 daughters. But I felt that I could defend this, that it was the right thing to do, that I am doing something that, as many of my colleagues mentioned, we have the power to do, and we will use our good judgment on whether or not to proceed with it. I'm not a huge fan of legislative rezoning, but over the years, I've tempered my resistance to some areas and can see myself doing things like this, saving an elderly couple $10,000, $20,000 to get, that's how much it costs right now. Either you do it yourself or you hire a consultant, and to go to the T L U C for a one-acre lot when your neighbor has a 50-acre lot and is M1, and he can swallow you up with his uses there, and all you wanna do is put a little old professional office building, you know, why am I gonna send you there and spend $10,000 to say, hey, you're not gonna impact his lot, so we're gonna ahead and let you do it, but you have to hire a consultant, and it's gonna cost you $5,000, $10,000, $20,000? Yet Matson comes in here, Far East comes in here, we don't even ask these questions. You know, Madam Speaker, again, you know, I have been hard-headed and hard-hearted sometimes, but I've learned to temper some of these things, and I believe this is correct. I believe it's the right thing to do. I believe it's, you know, good for the community, it's good for that individual, and it's not going to impact negatively the other property owners in the general area. That's my judgment. And to ensure and kinda give myself, when we introduce the bill, when a bill, when a land rezoning bill comes to us, Madam Speaker, before we even schedule the public hearing, we send letters to every member of the Development Review Committee, GPA, GWA, EPA, and we say, this bill has been introduced, we will schedule a public hearing in the near future, review it, let us know your comments. When we schedule the public hearing, we send another letter. We have now scheduled the public hearing on that piece of property that we said is going to be rezoned, and we sent you a letter on earlier, please give us your comments. And I would venture to say that on some of this, like this lot, GPA says, and EPA, and GWA says, hey, guys, it's right along Route 3, every place house around it is C, we don't even need to bother and send you a response, but we asked them for it, not once, twice, sometimes three times. Sometimes I ask the authors of the bills that are being introduced, of those that are requesting rezoning, hey, can you follow up for me with those members, because we've sent them letters and they haven't sent it in? So if you would like us to be able to report your bill out, we would request for you, even though we've, we know, because we review it, we know where it's at, we know that water and power exist there, and so, but we still ask the authors, can you just follow up, follow up with the mayor, follow up with EPA, follow up with GPA, and let us know so that my colleagues here can have the benefit of that information? So if there's no comments on these things, it's not through the lack of effort of this body or the committee or the authors in a lot of instances now. So I thank the cooperation of everyone that has been introducing rezoning bills. I thank their cooperation when we ask them, help us out, help the committee out, follow up also with the departments and agencies, have the individual that's getting it rezoned follow up themselves with the mayors, with the municipal planning councils, to get to us what their perspective is, what are their concerns, and so forth. So if there is a concern, I want to assure that we know water, power, sewer exists and is serviced, can service these lots. We know that egress and ingress are adequate to serve them because there's existing uses compatible with what is being proposed by this lot. And if you still are not satisfied with that, then I guess, as I said, each and every single one of us in here will take a look at the issue before us and exercise our good judgment. And I will respect everybody's judgment on these issues, and I hope that, you know, we will get your consideration on this based upon the information and the facts presented, both within the committee report and from what I have presented, from the perspective of having to shepherd through some of these rezoning bills as, so that we can offer you the information you need to make and exercise your good judgment, and I thank everyone for their consideration on these issues. Thank you, and so do us.
Thank you. On the motion then to send Bill 109 to third reading file without any objections, so ordered. On Bill number, oh, tomorrow, okay, so it's just about to do that. Okay, we're going then, moving on to Bill number 115. I recognize the author, Senator Duennius.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on 115. I ask that we move Bill 115-31 down to third reading file, and I'd like to discuss it.
Fransiggi.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, Madam Speaker, would this be appropriate to make some technical amendments at this point? Okay, um, on the, thank you.
The first one would be the second co-sponsor?
Yeah, that's gonna happen too. Madam Speaker, in the citation of the section here, it was 75-106, and it was supposed to be 75-107 on line two, section one, and so if we can make that correction? Yes, so an item, to add an item H, and the section should be 75-107. 75-106 doesn't have an alphabetical section to it, so we're just correcting that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't have my copy yet until...
Yeah, and then we're gonna do that for the title off also, Madam Speaker? An act to add a new item H to 75-107 instead of 75-106.
Okay, finally found the page.
Thank you.
Such a tiny bill.
I know.
No wonder I couldn't find it.
I wanted to follow my good colleague, also from AFME, he's got one-liners, and I like his bills.
That, look and repeat.
Okay, so, Madam Speaker, what I'd like to do here is in the title, an act to add a new item H to 75-107 instead of 75-106 of chapter, or title 21 Guam Code Annotated Relative to Requiring Two Appraisals of Any Property to Be Leased. And then also, Madam Speaker, on...
Wait, let me call that first, okay? And that is a very important amendment.
Yes, it is.
Because we can't make a mistake there. So on that amendment, without any objections, so ordered, and the clerks, you do have it, right, for the title and line two?
And so actually, it is kinda the same amendment, Madam Speaker, because that citation once again shows up in line two under section one, and that also will read 75-107 on line two.
Okay, on line two.
Yes.
So we did the title, and now for line two, on that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And then, Madam Speaker, there was some confusion in some responses I got from some folks on this particular legislation, so I would like to, on line three, where it says H, "The commission shall require two appraisals of any commercial," after, any would be "commercial," "property to be leased," and then "after leased," or "any license issued as authorized by this section." I just didn't wanna break down too many trees, so should I take a recess for that real quick and just make sure that gets...
I just wanna make, the clerks.
Can the clerk hit?
Okay, so then, on line, line three, where it says, "The commission shall require two appraisals of any..."
Commercial property.
Commercial property.
Right.
Clerks, do you have that? So we'll take that one first.
Okay.
Clerks, okay. "To be leased or..."
Or "any license issued."
Or "any license issued."
As authorized by this section.
Okay, so it should read, "The commission shall require two appraisals of any commercial property to be leased or any license issued as authorized by this section."
Yes, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, are there any discussion? No? Okay, Speaker Ben, on the amendment.
No, it doesn't. It clarifies that we don't need to do that for...
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, briefly, of course, this amendment is an amendment to the Chamor Land Trust's requirements, and I just wanted that to be clear, and that it would just make this requirements to ensure that the commission, when it does issue licenses, has a basis for establishing the value of the property, and so I just wanted to point that out. I support the changes, of course, because, number one, it makes it correct and appropriate, being placed in the appropriate section, and that, of course, the residential lots are set by statute with regards to the amount that can be charged for the license or the lease to be issued on residential lots as well as agricultural lots. It is in the commercial or commercial activity issue authorized via license in which there's additional economic value established that the Chamor Land Trust wants to get on a return on the use of its property, and so this gives a basis for giving the commission information to make a decision on what's the best economic use and economic return on its property. So I support the amendments as well as the legislation.
So on the amendment, and would you mind if we just do this on the title, you're gonna add the word "after any commercial property" as well? We can do it all at one time?
That's correct, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so there, so in three different sections, on the title, add the word "commercial" after "any," and then on line three, the same, "any commercial property," and also add the words "after leased or any license issued." Okay, so on the amendments, without any objections, and so ordered. Thank you. Senator, you still have the floor?
Yeah. Madam Speaker, unfortunately, it looks as though we may have used an old statute doing the research on this bill, so there is one more amendment.
Rewrite?
Uh, this is really very easy, Madam, this is all, this is all technical in nature.
Okay, let me be the judge of how easy it is because of our clerks.
Yeah, instead of adding a letter H, you would be adding a letter E.
Oh, E.
Yes, ma'am.
So the new item E.
That's correct.
New item E, then that would be in the title, also, E, the letter E, small E? And then also, when you go to line three, it will be small letter E?
That's correct, Madam Speaker.
Okay, for all of you, on the title, where it says "new item," parentheses, it would be E, not A, H, line two, strike out H and replace it with E, and then line three, strike out H and replace it with E. And that's correct, we've got the right...
That's correct, Madam Speaker.
So on that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
Okay, Madam Speaker, Legal Counsel is bringing up another issue to me, so can we take a small recess, please?
I think so too.
Thank you.
Recession. Already did, we made that change, the amendment for E, and I understand there's another technical amendment that you'd like to add.
Yes.
And that's, and that's what was passed already, but just to add the words...
To be.
Where it says, "or any license," add the words "to be..."
To be issued, that's correct.
Issue, okay? So on that amendment, no objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, just because this bill was perfected in this, in this body with your assistance, Madam Speaker, I now move that you become the second co-sponsor on this valuable piece of legislation.
Thank you very much, I'm honored.
Absolutely, and...
So do.
And...
No objections, I still... I say, no, you're not, guy's not gonna object to anything like that.
And, and because my, my good friend and, and, and our minority leader is still waiting for his bill to hit the floor, and I need to give him a victory in this body, please add Frank Blas Jr. as the third co-sponsor.
No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So the last motion then, to send it down?
Madam Speaker, I would just like to discuss the bill briefly.
On ratata, please, somebody speaking, senators, your attention, very important bill, please listen.
Madam Speaker, I would like to take this opportunity to once again, as I have publicly commend, the efforts of the current Director of Department of Chamorah Land Trust. It's been noted, um, in many news stories of late, uh, that he, as well as the board, are taking some extremely aggressive efforts and actions to do what is right and supposed to be done at the Chamorah Land Trust, and to ensure that they follow through on, on what the embodiment of the Chamorah Land Trust was put together for. And, and Madam Speaker, one of the biggest reasons, uh, for the need for this particular piece of legislation is they are currently working on their rules and regulations. And I'm sure, uh, as mentioned before by Oscar Calvo, the chairman, that, that this is gonna be, you know, something that they would, would, would put into their rules and regulations, but as we know, they're currently aggressively going after these efforts and to make sure that, that they are able to get fair market value for the properties that the Chamorah Land Trust is currently leasing, and to ensure that we take care of that going forward for our people. And, and Madam Speaker, as, as, as I would really point out as well, the main reason why it's so important to, to put these, uh, this, this provision in place is because the proceeds from this, from this, uh, from, from, from the lease of properties is what's gonna go in to ensure that we can realize the dream of thousands of our local people to be able to, to, to eventually get their leases on the property through having this revenue generated, to put the infrastructure in, and all the requirements that's needed in order to move forward and have the land trust be truly whole. So it's a, it's, it's a very short piece of legislation, four times amended, but I'm proud that it's, it's here. And I ask my colleagues, and I thank, uh, the chairman for, for rising in support and of the amendments at least, and I'm sure that, uh, I, I can get his vote as well when this hits the floor for voting. Thank you very much, uh, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this bill.
You're very welcome. And the motion then to send Bill 115 to the thir-- oh, Guaymalaga Comentes? Conseigui, then, Speaker Ben, and make an exception for you as the chairman, and because you're gonna support this bill.
No, Madam Speaker, I spoke on the amendments.
Oh, the amendments. Oh, but I made him close, but that's okay, I'll let you speak.
Well, that's not my fault.
Well, your hand came up too late, you see? That's the thing. Pay attention next time and stop talking to legal counsel. So now you can speak.
I was trying to follow the amendments, and so I needed legal advice to follow the amendments. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Um, Madam Speaker, I wanted to make an, uh, an amendment to the bill as amended, and the requirement of the appraisal, uh, at this time is silent as to who shall pay for it. And so I wanna just, uh, say that if somebody wants to propose a commercial activity on Chamorah Land Trust's property, that, uh, it is the interested party or the proposing party that pays for the appraisal. So I would like to add, uh, uh, an amendment to this bill, and, and that would, uh, basically state, and we could either have me state it, or I could take a, just a short minute recess to write, to write it up.
We're gonna take a recess. The legislature's back in session. Speaker Ben, you still have the floor, with, with an amendment?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, um, wanted to, uh, present two amendments, actually. I had another thought after, during our short recess. Uh, the first amendment is, um, to add the following to subsection E to read, "Appraisals shall be paid by the potential lesser or licensee, and at least one appraiser shall be chosen by the commission." So anybody who's proposing to lease property, uh, or license property under commercial activity from the commission would pay for two appraisals, and, uh, he would choose one, and the commission would choose the other appraiser. Uh, and that's the amendment, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, no objections, so ordered.
The second amendment, Madam Speaker, I wanted to add for consideration by the body, is, as you know, we are now, have a very active, um, executive director of the commission, and the concentration continues to be on trying to straighten out the existing licenses and leases. And as you recall, Madam Speaker, um, we continue to try to work with the commission to put in place the rules and regulations for commercial licenses and leases with the commission. And so we just didn't want to send anything, uh, in a message to the, uh, commission that they can now proceed with these commercial licenses and leases, uh, given the adoption of requiring the appraisals. So the second amendment I had, uh, would be to add, uh, the following to the end of the bill, and it would, uh, read, "Nothing herein shall be construed to authorize the commercial license or lease of Chamorah Land Trust's properties prior to the promulgation of rules and regulations pursuant to the administrative adjudication law." And I wanted to add another, um, uh, phrase there, uh, to put in, uh, after administrative AAL or adoption by the legislature to govern commercial licenses and leases. And the reason I did that is, we did have a first draft of the, uh, of the rules and regulations. We went through the public hearing, we had many hearings on those issues, it was not adopted, and, uh, there is, we've been working with the commission, and, and one of the alternatives that we're considering for, uh, adoption of those rules and regulations, the revised rules and regulations, was rather than having to go back out through the AAA with all the timelines, because they've had public hearings, that it can be introduced by the committee, uh, and then we do a public hearing on it. So it'd be just shorten it a little bit. So we wanted to allow, in this amendment, that, that the legislature can go ahead and adopt the rules and regulations pursuant to our public hearing, uh, bill process of, of, uh, presentation and, 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 um, approval by this body. So would be to add, or adoption by the legislature to govern commercial licenses and leases. So the two ways that the rules and regulations can be put in place is either it goes through the regular AAA, or it gets introduced by this body at the committee, and then, uh, public hearing and presentation, uh, at the, at the end to this body.
On the amendment, Senator Blas, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. -- thank you, Madam Speaker. Um, are we gonna divide the question?
Uh, we, no, we, the very first one, the one with E that we added on, that went down already. Now we're on F.
Okay. So, Madam Speaker, with regards to, to the amendment proposed, uh, with regards to F, um, yeah, Madam Speaker, I, I, I look at the amendment, and then I... and then, just reading it in totality with the rest of the legislation, then one begs the question, then why have the legislation at all? Recognizing that this is a process that we want to put in place, but the process won't be enacted until, you know, the rules and regulations that I'm sure is going to include this process as well has gone through the, has gone through, for the approvals. So, in providing this language to the proposed legislation, it basically brings it back, I don't want to say back to square one, because it's not back to square one, but it says, yes, you can do this, but you can't do this until, but it can't go into effect until everything else is put through, which goes to question, poses the question, why then have the legislation at all? Because in the promulgation and the rules and regulations, I'm sure they're going to have, will have this process, will identify this process as well. So, I think that it's a matter of recognizing that, and I'm, yes, I know that, you know, there is, you know, this whole effort to be able to put out, finally, the final rules and regulations for this. There's concern that with the proffer or this amendment into this bill would hold everything and set everything back to the point where, actually, the bill now then becomes a non-necessity. That said, is, I believe, though, that in the interim, that there is this now requirement so that in the commercial leases, there is the leases, or there is these appraisals that this occurs, as well as the identification as who's going to pay for these appraisals, and where, and who's going to choose these appraisals. I have no problem with that. I just have a concern with regards to now the amendment is proposed. And so, for that, ma'am, I respectfully object to the amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Blasch. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I mean, I really like the bill, and then I like the E where it says, who's going to pay for the appraisals? And of course, you know, now with F, then, my question here, really, and it's not a question, well, I don't know if it can be answered, is that, I know last year, some rules and regs came down, and then, at the very end, we did pass a bill saying, of course, that it would not go into effect because there are other, I guess, issues that needed to be heard again, and whatever the reasons are, here we are now, I would say, I'm not sure whether it's one year or two years later, and we still don't have any rules and regulations. And I think that that's really very important. So, nothing can ever really move forward with Chamorol Land Trust until such time that those rules and regs are in place. And we all know, and we all want, that to be able to build the trust funds so that they'll be able to go and put in the infrastructure, so then we can have then families go out and either lease and start to develop these properties, can be very difficult on their own, and very difficult, of course, for the commission to actually even move forward. And I just don't want to put anything that will impede, of course, you know, us or them actually moving forward. Now, I don't want to haphazardly either have them go out and just go out and give properties or lease properties without any semblance of organization here, or having, you know, certain standards being set or rules and regs being set in terms of leasing how many properties, for how long, for how much, all that. So, it's really important that that gets done. And I'm actually putting out a plea here that, you know, that we try to do this as quickly as possible, because then we pass this, and then what? It sits again for however long. You know, this first session or the second session of this term. I understand, I really empathize with the previous speaker. I understand where he's coming from. We've had many dialogues about this. We've been approached by individuals within the commission have asked, why is it that we've not done this? What else do we want? Tell them what it is that, you know, we want as a body so that they themselves then can continue to then make some of the changes. Some of them have basically said, we don't even want to come to the legislature anymore. I mean, they are, I hate to say this, but one of them said, we are afraid, actually, of coming to the legislature and being chastised or being, you know, looked at, that we're not doing, you know, anything. I mean, that they're not doing anything, but, you know. And I know we kind of laugh at this because we're saying, well, you shouldn't be afraid to have to come to the legislature. We're just like, you know, all of you. But I just, I don't know what it is. I'm going to ask that we, you know, when this passes, then, that we really start to look at the rules and regs. I like the idea that the chairman has said that maybe, now that we have the last year's rules and regs, that maybe we can take it apart and introduce maybe a couple of bills, maybe, I don't know where there's by sections or whatever. But I really think that we should start doing that. I look forward to actually discussing some of those rules and regs, so we can get them going. I don't want us to be the obstacle for the Land Use Commission to move forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sidus Massey, Speaker Wampat. Senator Duñez, you're recognized on the Pangolin amendment.
Yeah, Madam Speaker, I certainly do sympathize and empathize with the concerns of the good senator from Baragada. And I understand that, you know, we would expect that this is something that, and the adoption of the rules and regulations that would be put in place. But I think that, in this instance, I do support this amendment on the basis that they would have a guideline. We don't have those rules and regulations in place right now. And as a matter of fact, I think when this becomes law, it would be an opportunity for the Land Use Commission, or for the Chamorol Land Trust, in this instance, for those leases and licenses that they are actually found to be in good order right now, can state that this is public law now. And while it's not necessarily retroactive, or we'll have to decide as a commission on what we can do, but the fact of the matter is, this will be a reason to reestablish the fees for that piece of property. So, Madam Speaker, I think that it's a safe amendment in looking towards the issue that we cannot, we cannot, you know, assume that that would be a prudent practice that would be put in place. And this actually codified in law, regardless of when the promulgation of that particular rules and regulations come forward, will be a guideline, will be the base of where they go in order to determine what is prudent practice. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Duñez, are there anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? If not, Speaker Ben, you can close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, maybe just a little bit of history, then, on the rules and regulations. When the rules and regulations were promulgated by the Chamorol Land Trust Board and Commissions last term, the overwhelming testimony from the beneficiaries of the trust, who the trust exists, who the trust is supposed to serve, who the trust is supposed to preserve the assets for the future generations of the descendants of those beneficiaries, the overall testimony was that the rules and regs as proposed does not benefit and does not account for the desires of the beneficiaries of the trust. And so, this body rejected that. There were terms and conditions, authorizations contained in the rules and regulations that deviated from the core mission of the trust. The core mission of the trust was to put property for residential and agricultural uses into the hands of the Chamorol people, the beneficiaries of the trust. The rules and regs that were sent down put that as secondary and even tertiary mission, and elevated the need to lease Chamorol properties to outsiders. And so, the beneficiaries voiced their concern, and we presented that before this body, and this body agreed to reject that. And we agreed to work with the commission to make the changes to those rules and regulations. And of course, this was at the very end of the term. So, when the new administration came in, we made contact with the commission. We didn't even get a director until a month, two months later, that was sent to this body and to the committee to work with. So, we couldn't just introduce something without the benefit of working with the administration on what their perspective is, what their philosophy is, what their guidance would be to the trust, its director, and its board members. Three months down the line, we didn't have a quorum at the trust. There were no commissioners appointed. We confirmed two members, and if you recall, I sent letters to the administration urging the administration to appoint the commission members so we could get moving. And lo and behold, two days after I sent a letter, I think, no, I think it was the same day. Of course, I, being interviewed, I mentioned to them, we need these members. If this is a priority, then we need these members. When I finally put it in writing, that very afternoon, a press release was issued out of the governor's office appointing two members, which left the commission without a quorum, who couldn't act, couldn't make any decisions. We again appealed to the governor saying, we need to resolve some critical matters in order for the trust to have some guidance and some direction. Please appoint more members. Nothing, silence. Finally, we got through second-hand information, not a direct communication from the governor, that he had decided to reinstate two former members. So, finally, we had some kind of structure and management oversight, policy oversight over the commission. We had Mr. Monte Mofness appointed, and we had Mr. Michael Borja, and Ms. Rita Francis appointed. We held hearings immediately, and then we approved and confirmed those two. Still lacking another member, we again appealed to the governor. And I think it was like three or four weeks later, almost a month later, he appoints the fifth and last member. We held a hearing on it, and just yesterday, we approved the nomination of Ms. Amanda Santos to the commission. So, to say that, hey, we haven't been doing anything, we are trying to work with the administration and the people that they put in charge of the commission to set the direction. And it's really hard to work with somebody who's not there. So, finally, we have somebody. And I want to say that, in the last commission, they had placed a voluntary moratorium on all commercial licenses and leases. We had a bill that proposed to make it a legal moratorium, a legislative moratorium, but the board, the commission, decided that we were going to do it ourselves because we didn't want us, you know, we think it's important that we do so because of so many concerns. And I commend the new executive director because, as you recall, on many oversight meetings, Mr. Speaker, you were there. You had the concerns. You asked for the resignation of the commission members based on decisions that they made. There were some real concerns. They had 57 commercial licenses and leases, and they couldn't even figure out who has paid what, who has authority to be on which lot, and so forth. So, what this amendment does is it makes sure that we first fix the existing licenses and leases, bring them all to order, put their files in place, and then we move forward, focus on the residential side, which is the core mission, and then we work on the commercial side. So, that's what this amendment is trying to ensure, Mr. Speaker, that we don't just run out once again, and just because we can get two appraisals, the commission can decide that this property is better for commercial than residential. Well, we have 2,000, 10,000 residential applicants waiting for a lot, and the commission is now going to say, I'm going to lease it for commercial and have the residential applicants waiting. So, we don't want to, we want to know that there's a basis for how they designate which lots should be commercial, that they are all guided by rules and regulations, and not whoever they are told, lease this lot to because it's cheap. So, that's why I'm asking that this amendment continues the policy that has been established by the members of the commission that they will, we will first work on putting in the rules and regulations on the commercial side so that there's no question when they go out and they issue RFPs or they issue letters of interest for the economic exploitation of beneficiaries' property, that it will be exploited for the benefit of the beneficiaries and not for self-interest and outside interest. We want to ensure that that is set in rule and regulations that will guide this commission members, and nothing else. Absent that, then it's whoever has appointed them can tell them what to do because they have nothing to guide them except the direction of the appointing authority. And I want the commission and the trust to exist so that the beneficiaries can point to what is required to protect their interests and what the responsibilities of this commission members are that they must consider when taking property that could be used for residential and making a decision that it is best used for commercial, and have the residential applicants wait, have them go without while we are serving the commercial interests of outside, non-beneficiaries. There's got to be a basis and rules and regulations. There's gotta be a basis and rules and regulations. [speaking Spanish] 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 [speaking Spanish]
Thank you, Speaker Ben. I understand the amendment has a, an objection, there being an objection. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. In favor of Senator Ben's amendment? The amendment passes. On the bill, Senator Duane, do you wish to close and send it down? On the motion to send the bill down to voting file. Hearing no objections, so ordered. I believe we're now on Bill 120, oh, no, wait. Madam Secretary, you're back on with Bill 68.
[speaking Spanish] Mr. Speaker, I want to thank my colleagues for being patient with me and helping me out through this amendment. I have an amendment that has been passed out, and I'd just like to make a couple of amendments to it, just some technical ones. The bill will add to the following at the end of the bill to read. "The Department of Land Management shall record the transfer of the easement to the Government of Guam," comma, "shall enforce the construction of the retaining wall as required by this act, and shall record the front yards," because there's several front yards, so add an S to yard, "setback and density variances authorized herein on Lot Number 54-2, and then after the word "to" before the period, add capital REM." Again, this, Mr. Speaker, will address the concerns that Speaker Juan Pad noted and will ensure that the private owners will construct the retaining wall.
Thank you very much. On the amendment to Bill 68, everyone has a copy. Anybody wish to speak on the amendment proffered by Senator Tina Muniya Barnes?
No objection.
Anybody object to the amendment hearing or seeing no objection? The amendment is adopted. On the bill, or on the, on the main bill, anybody else wish to speak? Hearing or seeing no hands, go up. The, wait, wait, I see Senator Adda.
It's on Bill 68?
Correct.
I just, the author would yield. We, we state in there that land management shall, shall enforce the construction of the retaining wall. So after this bill is enacted, all the paperwork is done, and, you know, 60, 90 days later, he says, I'll get to it when I get to it, and he doesn't. Then what? So should we put a, it seems like you put a reversionary clause in there that says, you know, build it within 180 days, or all these variances are no longer applicable. It's just, there's just, you know, it's just no enforce, there's no teeth to it. Well, I don't have the amendment in my mind right now, but I do raise the concern that there's, there's just no oomph to it.
Thank you very much. Senator Guthridge?
[speaking Spanish] Section at the bottom simply says that the retaining wall shall be constructed by the, do you use the word grantee, or what is the word that you use for the person that's getting the variance? Recipient of the variance?
Just use the landowner.
Okay, okay. That the retaining wall shall be built by the landowner within 120 days of passage of the spell, or the authorized variance shall be canceled, immediately canceled.
Rescinded.
Rescinded. The authorized variance shall be immediately rescinded.
We'll take a minute for Senator Barnes.
Speaker, there's a suggestion that we sort of change the language a little bit of what I had just stated.
Please.
To sound as follows. That the variance authorized by this act shall not take effect until the retaining wall is built by the landowner, which shall be within 120 days from the passage of the bill. So there's a contingency provision, in other words, if legal counsel can write it. What?
Can we work that out, counsel? All right.
Thank you.
With the, with, with the condition precedent. Any objection to, to the amendment by Senator Guthridge? Hearing and seeing no objection, counsel and clerk shall make the appropriate correction. On the, on the, on the main bill, any other senators wish to be heard? On the motion to send the bill to voting file, any objection? No objection. Bill's in voting file. Next on the agenda is Bill 120, are we going to be at 111? Okay, Bill 96.
[speaking Spanish] Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill Number 96-31COR be moved to the third reading, and I'd like to just briefly discuss it.
Please.
Mr. Speaker, Lot Number 2181-4 new, dash R1 new, Lot Number 5200-3, and Lot Number 5199-1 in the municipality of Baragada was formerly held by the federal government and was returned back based on their agreement to the original landowners and pursuant to that enabling legislation and mandate, this land was returned, but there was no zoning designated for the heirs and the descendants of the Estate of Juan Santos Camacho. And that it was also noted that since the return of this property, Mr. Speaker, to the Estate of Juan Santos Camacho, the family requests to zone the properties consistent with the uses of the properties and the surrounding parcels that are both privately owned and properly leased to business or individuals by the Guam, the Guam International Airport Authority. This zone designation is for M1, Mr. Speaker. And we did have a public hearing. There is a map that was submitted, it's in a part of the committee report. There was letters of support from the municipal planning council, also the airport, and also from the family representative, Mr. John C. Camacho. So I ask that my colleagues support this effort as the family wants to build within the vicinity but needs the necessary zoning requirement. And again, there was a concern about why it's going through us, and because this land, as I noted earlier, was not zoned, it is our responsibility to work this designation for, for, for them.
Thank you very much.
So I ask my colleagues to support the same. Thank you.
Any other senator wish to be heard on Bill 96? Senator Pangolinan?
Speaker, just wanted to kind of go back in terms of the discussion earlier about rezoning and so forth, and gives me an opportunity to provide information of what has occurred in this rezoning request. And I want to state for the record, for example, that in this rezoning request, for example, we sent letters to the, Mr. John Camacho, who is the owner. We sent letters to Mr. David Camacho, the executive director of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, since the property was deeded to Ancestral Lands and of course through the Returns, Lands Returns Act, deeded over to the original landowners. We sent letters to Jesse, Jesse Palikan, the mayor of Baragada. We sent letters to Mary Torres, who is an adjacent landowner with the airport authority. We sent letters to Mr. Ray Padua, Department of Public Works, horizontal section. We sent letters to Mr. Glenn E., Department of Public Works, vertical section. We sent letters to Mr. Edwin Aranza, the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. We sent letters to Mr. Joseph Garrido, the Guam Water Works Authority. We sent letters to Mr. Antonio Palomo from the Guam Power Authority. We sent letters to John Mark Joseph, the State Archaeologist, from the Department of Parks and Recreation. We sent letters to Mr. Ray Cesares from the Bureau of Statistics and Plans. We sent letters to Mr. Pete Terlahi at the Department of Agriculture. We sent letters to Ms. Anisha Terlahi, the Director of the Department of Land Management. These are the individuals that would normally review any rezoning or zoning request that comes before the Guam Land Use Commission. So I just want to assure my colleagues that when the committee gets these bills, that we don't just have a hearing and off we go to the races, that we try to do our due diligence, send letters to these individuals to get their feedback and their comments on what the impact of this zoning would be. And in this case, we did get several responses from these departments and agencies, and they are included in the committee report. So thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and Sidus Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Ben. Any other senator wish to be heard on Bill 96? Senators, Bill 96. Senator Adda, did I see your hand flash up?
Can we take a?
All right, we'll take a short recess. We're back on the record. Senator Addy, did you wish to be heard on the bill? Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, all right. On the motion to send Bill 96 to voting file, any objection? Seeing and hearing, no objection. Next bill on the agenda is Bill 128. Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill Number 128 be accepted in the voting file with some brief discussion.
All right. Any objection to 128 going to third reading for discussion? Seeing none, please proceed, Mr. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, Bill 128 really is companion legislation to a law that I was able to get the legislature to support following the 2006 election, where we heard many documented cases with the use of the IvoTronic machines and how unreliable those machines have been nationwide in terms of accurately accounting for all the ballots that were cast via that electronic voting machine. And so what we did back then, now, Madam Speaker, if you recall, we required the Election Commission to do certain things if they're going to be able to reinstate the use of electronic voting machines, such as having auditable paper trails, such as having a public education campaign to teach individuals how to use this machine. But notwithstanding how much the Election Commission has tried to move forward on that, the issue still remains with what kind of IvoTronic machines we should have. And so Bill 128 sets a standard that if we ever have to resurrect the electronic voting machines, it's a standard to which I'm very excited about, Madam Speaker, where you actually have voter-verified paper ballots. So if you can imagine with me for a minute someone going into a poll, a voting booth, using the electronic voting machine, they'll be able to cast their ballots. The ballot will be printed out, and you take this ballot and you put it into the box with other ballots, whether they were cast, votes were used by pencil or by pen, or whether the ballots were produced by this electronic voting machine. All these ballots will be counted at the same time. So in the event that there's any need for a runoff or any questions thereof, you have that audible paper trail. So in closing, I want to again thank Senator Rodriguez's committee and his help as we work for, move forward to address these kinds of issues in our election process, as we move forward to want to secure free and fair elections here on our island. And I'm just thankful that we have the Election Reform Committee, who's been very supportive and open to these kinds of initiatives. So I ask for our colleagues to feel the same way, and please support Bill 128.
Okay, on the motion. Anybody would like to speak in motion? Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this legislation. I also want to recognize the efforts of the Majority Leader in being very consistent in wanting to truly reform our election process. And I know that the other members here feel the same way, and I'm going to do my part as well to assist in that effort and to make sure we look at the whole election process in general prior to the next election season, because I think it's very important. You know, although we can't really guarantee an election, a lawsuit-proof election, because these things naturally do come up, we can really do our part to make sure that we can create a more efficient election process. And 128 is one of those processes, Madam Speaker. I think it moves us back into the direction of electronic voting, but it brings us there one step at a time. And I think ensuring and creating this voter-verified paper ballot is a good start. So I rise in support and ask my colleagues to support this as well. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Muna Barnes, you're recognized.
Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to stand and rise in support of Bill Number 128-31. And I too want to extend my own donkuluna sidus massey to the Majority Leader, Senator Respeja for authorizing this, I mean, for authoring this legislation. Madam Speaker, usually even when we go places and do things, if we go to a store, we want to buy some merchandise, your items get ringed up, and then you have a receipt given back to you. And usually, a lot of times, we here don't even look at the items that are being punched up. And then when we go through our bags, by the time we get home and we look at all the items that was purchased, sometimes we say, oh, my God, I thought I got this item, and yet I said, oh, my God, let me look at my receipt to see if what I thought I bought was really there. And for me, having this paper ballot is like, for me, a check and balance for me personally is to know that I went in, I did the electronic vote, I have a receipt that's given to me, and I know who I voted for. And it gives me that, I would say, safety net for saying that my ballot, my verified paper ballot, is a security for me to know that that vote will be counted. And you and I know that these, in the most recent elections, there were so many, so many inconsistencies. And if we want to make things right, what better way than to knowing that we have accountability and that if we've done something electronically, there's paper to back it up. And you know, the good Majority Leader will always tell me to go green and save on, save the trees and save on the paper, but there are just some cases where you really need that hard copy for proof. And I've always said that sometimes having proof that something was done and something is recorded just gives you that assurance that you've done what you've intended to do. So I rise in support of this Bill 128 of this legislation, and I ask that my colleagues please support the same. Thank you.
On the motion. Senator Respeja then to close? Send it down? Okay, on the motion then to send Bill 128 to the third reading file without any objection? What? Okay, sort of. We are now in Bill 135, and I recognize the Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move that Bill 135-31 be placed on third reading file, and I'd ask for an opportunity to speak.
Continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. First, I'd like to thank the... Chairman Palacios for the expedited hearing that he conducted on this, and I'd like to thank all the members of the legislature that attended the hearing on Bill 135. Those that attended the hearing on 135 will remember that it was quite an emotional day with testimony from a victim and a lot of testimony from lawyers and social workers in support of the bill. There was no one who came and testified against the bill. I want to make a few comments, Madam Speaker, about the bill. During the hearing, there was a question as to whether or not Guam was in the forefront of this whole movement and why it was that other states were not jumping on the bandwagon in support of removing statute limitations. I'd like to clarify and make it clear to the members of this legislature, this is not revolutionary legislation. It's not outlier legislation. It's not even new legislation. Included in the committee report, you'll find a report from, a one-page summary from the National Center for Victims of Crime on the statute limitations fact sheet. And those of you, if you can raise it on your computers or if you have hard copy, you'll see that 32 states have crimes in which there is no criminal statute limitations, meaning that a criminal prosecution can be brought at any time regardless of how much time has passed since the crime occurred. Of these 32 states, seven states actually have no statute limitations on any felony whatsoever. Bill 135 is proposing a statute limitations repeal or exemption for first and second degree criminal sexual conduct only. But there are seven states where there is absolutely no statute limitations for any felony whatsoever. There are eight additional states where they have no statute limitations on the most serious crimes. So right there, you already have 15 states that have statute limitations exemptions for very serious felonies, and in seven of them for no, for all felonies regardless of whether or not it's first degree, second degree, or third degree felony. In addition to these 15 states, there are 11 states with no statute limitations on specific sex offenses. And so that brings it up to 26, Madam Speaker, of states that have no statute limitations on sex offenses. And an additional five states that have no statute limitations on child sex abuse. It's now six, because Guam, when this legislature passed Bill 33 and the governor signed it into 31-6, became the sixth state to remove the statute limitations on child sex abuse. Madam Speaker, when I introduced Bill 33 at the beginning of this legislative session, there were many people that came up to me and asked why I wasn't going to repeal or provide an exemption to the statute of limitations for all sex abuse. I tried to, I implored them to please allow me to first see if I could convince this legislature that we should take one small bite of this giant elephant of statute limitations and remove the statute of limitations as it related to just that very heneous crime of child sexual abuse. I'm very proud of the fact that this Guam legislature unanimously voted in favor of Bill 33 and that the governor signed it. So we were number six on this list, so now this should be updated to 33 states. The other thing about Guam that was interesting, Madam Speaker, before I introduced Bill Number 33, was that there was a statute of limitations of three years for all felonies on Guam except for one crime, and that was crime against, by a public officer for misconduct. And they had three-year statute after that person left public office. It was interesting that in the previous legislature, the members of this body decided that for any kind of corruption that had been committed by members of the government, that they would remove the statute of limitations and to try to make sure that the employees in that department who were aware of the corruption or the misdeed by their bosses were not afraid of losing their job if they were the whistleblowers. The statute of limitations exception in Chapter 9 read that it would be three years after that the perpetrator had left office. And so that could run 30 years depending on how long it is that a person remains in office before they step down, resign, or retire from office. And that singular exemption to the statute of limitations existed on Guam statute until Bill 33 became public law 31-6. Because of the fact that I had been approached by so many people, and I literally mean too many people to count, as latest last week at a funeral, a woman came up to me and pulled me to the side, and she said, you know, you're really doing good work, but when are you going to repeal the statute of limitations on all sexual misconduct? We have, she admitted to me that she herself had been the victim of a sexual abuse as an adult, and she wondered why I only did it for the children. I again explained what I had explained to all of, just earlier today, and she understood. And I said, but Bill 135 has been introduced, and I would hope that you could come and testify. Unfortunately, she didn't come and testify, but others have sent in testimony, and the committee report is replete and has numerous testimony from various individuals throughout the island in support of the repeal. And I want to make it very clear, Madam Speaker, that the repeal that I'm, the exemption that I'm proposing is only to first and second degree criminal sexual conduct. First degree criminal sexual conduct is when the victim is under the age of 14 or the, let's see, we've already taken care of those first two, under 14. The sexual penetration occurs under circumstances involving the commission of another felony. The actor is aided and abetted by more than one other person involving circumstances in which the actor knows or has reason to know that the victim is mentally defective, mentally incapacitated, or physically helpless. The actor uses force or coercion to accomplish the sexual penetration. Also, it's first degree criminal sexual conduct if the actor is armed with a weapon or any article used in a way to lead the victim to reasonably believe that he or that it is a weapon. And six, the actor causes personal injury to the victim and force or coercion is used to accomplish the sexual penetration. Or seven, the actor causes personal injury to the victim and the actor knows or has reason to know that the victim is mentally defective, mentally incapacitated, or physically helpless. And these are first degree criminal sexual conduct. And I know when we discussed Bill Number 33, there was an attempt by various members of the legislature to try to address the issue of how do we protect even adults or those over the age of 18 who because of their disability, be it mental or physical, are unable or incapable of protecting themselves. And we tried to fashion something to take care of that. This Bill 135 will make it very clear that because of the disability or the incapacitation of these individuals, be it physical or mental, or the injury that you caused, that it is a first degree criminal sexual conduct and that there would be no statute of limitations on the prosecution of that. Second degree criminal sexual conduct is defined in 2520 as, again, with, besides the under 14, which already we've taken care of, it occurs in circumstances involving another felony. The actor is aided or abetted by one or more persons, and the actor knows or has reason to know that the victim is mentally defective, mentally incapacitated, or physically helpless. And the actor uses force... And the actor uses force, the actor is armed, and personal injury. It's virtually the same, actually, definition, first and second degree. But I wanted to make it clear so everybody understands what is first degree and what is considered second degree criminal sexual conduct. And I'm hoping that my colleagues will support this. We had testimony from Dr. Bazut, Healing Hearts, in support of this. The Attorney General gave a very heart-wrenching piece of testimony where in the end, he ended his, concluded his statement with, "There is no statute of limitations to the suffering and the trauma that is experienced by a victim of criminal sexual conduct." And so there really oughtn't be also a statute of limitations on when that action can or should be brought. And when we were having the discussion on Bill 33, I want to thank Senator Benn because he probably was the most explicit and succinct in his description. Criminal sexual conduct is not a crime of sexual gratification. Criminal sexual conduct and abuse is a crime of control. And it's that kind of thing that needs to be addressed, and those kinds of individuals regardless of whether or not the perpetrator is suffering from any kind of incapacitation or dysfunction, that they can and still can commit and cause serious physical and emotional trauma to an individual even if there is no penetration. And so it's that kind of force that needs to be addressed, that kind of behavior that causes so much. PTSD is, as a student who's currently away studying for, I believe it's a master's degree, Ms. Larmo, her testimony that she submitted from school in support of the legislation talks about the physical and emotional trauma that the victims suffer as a result of this control that is exerted over them by these perpetrators. And the fact that it takes time, it takes lots of time before you're willing and you're capable of coming forward to admit the fact that you had been sexually abused. And it was made very clear during the hearing on Bill 135 when the first speaker, speaking as a private individual, spoke about a sexual abuse that he suffered 40, 50 years ago, 50 years ago. And this is not someone with a mental or physical incapacity, Madam Chair. This is a gentleman who has a master's from Harvard and a master's from William &amp; Mary and a bachelor's from St. Anselm. So this is a brilliant young man who, even with that kind of education and high IQ, was not able to come forward for 50 years to admit the abuse, the sexual trauma that he suffered 50 years ago. So it takes time for people to process these things, and it's important that they're able to be able to come forward and do this. Unfortunately, everything that occurred before we pass this legislation, if this legislature does pass this legislation, the governor does sign it into law, unfortunately, the statute of limitations on all that is lost. But at least we can protect our children, your grandchildren, and other young people, and even adults who may suffer at the hands of some unscrupulous perpetrator who, using force or taking advantage of their disabilities, subjects them to criminal sexual conduct. So Madam Chairman, I'm hoping that my colleagues have had an opportunity to read the testimony that was provided. It was all in favor, and I just want to make it clear to some people who did not, who believed that this was some outlier legislation that was cutting edge. We are actually behind the curve, we're behind the ball in this one, we're way behind. 32 other states that have moved forward in this respect. And so I'm asking us to get into the 21st century, move into protecting our people, male, female, regardless of age. And unfortunately, even in this community, Madam Speaker, I mean, we've seen the horrendous news stories where even our menopausal have been subjected to criminal sexual conduct by young perpetrators. Again, an issue of control, it's not one, I don't know, I mean, I can't presume that, but I mean, it did seem to be an issue of gratification as much as it was an issue of control and a desire to control even, I think the last one that I saw was an 80-year-old woman. And so, Madam Speaker, I'm hoping that my colleagues will show the same courage and progressive foresightedness that they did in the passage of Bill 33 and will join in the passage of Bill 135 so that at least for these three crimes, criminal sexual conduct, first and second degree, child sexual abuse, and corruption, that Guam will be part of the 33 other states that have moved forward in removing the statute of limitations. And just so that it goes above that, besides the 32 that I listed, there are six other states where the statute of limitations is more than 20 years for some of the other offenses. But I just wanted to bring to the fore the fact that though there was question as to why we were way ahead of everybody, it's time. Okay. I hope for the support of my colleagues, and I thank you for allowing me to speak on Bill 135.
Thank you very much for wrapping up. Vice Speaker, on the motion, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of the legislation. And Madam Speaker, in my prior life as a police officer, I've had the unfortunate circumstance of having to investigate crimes such as these. And I tell you, Madam Speaker, just as my experience and my observation as the investigating, in some cases, the initial investigating officer, and also in other cases, the follow-up detective in many of these instances. You know, one of the things they try to teach you in law enforcement is to try to separate your emotions from your job. But when you see the horror and you see what happened, literally, when you see what happened to these victims, and I sometimes find it almost cruel myself as an investigator to question or to interview these victims and try to convince them to say things that, for the benefit of the investigation, freshen their minds. And a little trick in law enforcement, the closer you are to responding to an incident, the more likely you are to be able to catch the perpetrator. But in a lot of instances, in a lot of cases with a lot of these victims, that's not the Because they have to first get past the trauma of what had happened to them. That includes, in some cases, the embarrassment. And as much as you try to assure them that what had happened to them was not their fault, what had happened to them should not be embarrassing to them, it's that wall that is put up. It's that defensive structure. And you know, Madam Speaker, some of these perpetrators know this. They recognize this. They instill this fear into their victims because some of them know that the longer it takes for them to be caught, chances are they won't be. And a lot of them know about statute of limitations. I can tell you, Madam Speaker, of a time when I was investigating an incident where I know this individual was responsible for a number, and albeit, we're talking about criminal sexual conduct, we were talking about another crime. But the individual took pride and pleasure in being able to tell me of the other crimes that he committed, and he knew, and he looked me straight in the face and he said, "I can tell you this because you know what? I know you can't do anything because the statutes of limitations have run out of And then he wore it like a badge of honor. They didn't sense me enough that I, you know, and I want to thank the good author from PD. And really, I want to apologize for not seeing this earlier and probably being the first to author this. Because like he had stated, other than the crimes of sexual abuse against our children, misconduct by government officials, and murder, I think it's high time, and it's about time, that we remove the statute of limitations from this. You know, if you think back and if you look, even when I think back, Madam Speaker, as a victim of a car theft, okay, or somebody broke into my car when I was attending university, and items were stolen from within my car, did it devastate me then? Yes, it did. Does it bother me today? No, it doesn't. But that is nothing compared to when an individual controls you, violates you, cahors you, threatens you, stays in your mind forever. And I'm sure, Madam Speaker, that what aggravates that even more is that the perpetrator for that victim is still out there. And I think that as the good author had stated, we've moved into the 21st century with a lot of times, and as far as our investigative techniques, our communications amongst law enforcement personnel, enough so that there are more tools today, investigatory tools today, that I'm sure that myself, Senator Guthberts, and Senator Palacios, when we were police officers, we would have greatly appreciated those tools when we were police Let's add one more tool to that toolbox. One that can actually, so that when a police officer or a responding officer or a caseworker or social worker goes to that victim, and they say to them, "We will do everything that we can," to see that justice is served on this individual that had violated you, that we don't have to say that with a caveat of, "We'll do everything that we can in the next three years." We can now say truthfully and honestly, "We will do everything we can for as long as And the same message that we send out to those who continuously want to abuse children will say this to those who want to commit these type of crimes. I'm very confident, Madam Speaker, that this body is going to pass this legislation, very confident that this is going to be law. And in that confidence, I can tell those perpetrators, "Be very careful because we're going to find you." So with that, Madam Speaker, again, I want to thank the author, I want to apologize to those victims for not seeing this early. And I want to ask and I want to beg my colleagues, please, seriously consider, this is one piece of legislation, please, that it has to come out with unanimous, unanimously, that we have to be on the side of our victims, of those victims. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Blas, on the motion, Senator Guthberts, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Boy, I shared the comments of my just former police officer colleague and also senatorial colleague who just spoke. You know, when we get up in the morning, what do we see in our newspapers? Disgusting news about sexual crimes, offensive news about sexual crimes, and nine out of 10 of these crimes are perpetuated against children. To me, Madam Speaker, and I've been in law enforcement, this is the worst kind of crime, taking advantage of children. And in most cases, if you study these scenarios, the perpetrator is known to the child. Senator Cruz is right. These are crimes where the motive is control of another person. Last week, there was a story of a legal proceeding involving someone who sexually molested a child for seven years, quote-unquote, "known to him." They're always known to him, that's how the news is reported. The victim is known to the perpetrator. You know, I respect our courts, but I want to see our judicial system be more stricter when it comes to these kinds of crimes. Because there are no excuses for this behavior. Cannot justify it in any form, any shape. This is an excellent bill. And we've been talking about this for a while. And Senator Cruz, a respected jurist, took the action upon himself to write this bill, introduce this bill, and present it to us for consideration. I'd like to get up in the morning and not have to read these kind of stories in the news. One day last week, there were six stories on pages four and five of this kind of crime. It was overwhelming. Yes, we have mechanisms in place, like other places, for counseling, rehabilitation, psychological services, great. But let's give the victims the opportunity to receive those same kinds of services and to clear their minds from the experiences that they have, even if it is years later. You know, oftentimes, ladies and gentlemen of the legislature, these victims, when they're young in particular, they cannot articulate their experience. young in particular, they cannot articulate their experience. Many of them are scared to speak, to report it. They're even scared of the police officers that interview them. When I was with DPS and GPD, we started a program to have women officers assist victims of sexual assaults, if they are women, because many of the women were uncomfortable talking to the male officers. Am I right, Senator? He's nodding his head. Some of them won't even tell you what happened, especially young, young people. But years later, as they begin to understand that they were a victim and they were mistreated, and they get more self-assurance and more education about their rights, you know, they want to speak up. And this bill would allow that. This bill would allow that. So I stand wholeheartedly in support of this bill, and I'd like to ask Senator Cruz to please include me as one of his co-sponsors. Let us speak with one voice for those who have difficulty speaking up. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Guthberts on the motion, Senator Blasch, I mean Palacios, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when Bill 135 was referred to my committee, I look at it and I immediately look at the calendar agenda for public hearing reservation, and I feel that there is an urgency to hearing this bill, so I immediately put it on the calendar. Of course, there's favorite testimony, and even after I submitted, the committee submitted the committee report, the committee continues to receive text messages of testimony supporting the passage of Bill 135. Madam Speaker, Bill 135 is not to make sexual assault prosecutable because such a crime is already prosecutable. Bill, I mean, Bill 135 proposes to remove the statute of limitation beyond the three years, just remove it completely, so that no person who committed such a crime really shall be free from prosecuting for as long as that person lives. Madam Speaker, the sexual crime should be one of the few crimes that should, for which no statute of limitation shall apply. The rationale for the statute of limitation, Madam Speaker, is that, to my understanding, is that when a person committed a crime and not caught, that that person in some way suffers uncertainty, suffers nervousness, and guilt, and that for the duration of three years, if that person is not caught, the rationale is that that person has already suffered enough such that even if the person were to be prosecuted, punished, and convicted, that the punishment really would not have been greater than the suffering that the perpetrator will have suffered, have suffered during the dispendancy period of three years. But when you look at the sexual crime, the victim suffers for life, a lot of times for life. And I feel that that suffering should parallel and apply in the same fashion to the perpetrator, and the perpetrator should also continue to suffer in uncertainty, in guilt, and those things, so that at any time that this individual is caught, that the law should then apply. Statute of limitation, the clock stops when the person leaves the jurisdiction, but then it resumes when the person comes back. But it's only for three years. And I believe that it's time for this body, for this government, for Guam, to look at other heinous crimes and begin to explore, I guess, the possibility or the feasibility of, if not remove the statute of limitation, extend the statute of limitation. Why not? We can have variants, 10-year statute of limitation, 15-year statute of limitation. Right now, for misdemeanors, it's one-year statute of limitation. For all misdemeanors, other than the few crimes that we are not beginning to remove the statute of limitation, for felony crimes, three years is the maximum. And I feel that for sex crime, the suffering is so long-term, and sometimes for life, suffered by the victim, so that the perpetrator, Madam Speaker, should also suffer the same fate. And that is really the rationale for removing the statute of limitation. He should not be protected from prosecution at any time. And I rise in support of this bill as it applies to this crime. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator Palacios on the motion. Are there any other speakers? Vice Speaker, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And I thank my colleagues for their very kind comments. I would like to just add Senator Blas, Senator Palacios, and Senator Guthberts as co-sponsors of the legislation.
On the motion, without any objection, so ordered, and they are Blas, Palacios, We will take a brief recess. Okay, senators, then, we will recess until tomorrow morning at nine. Right, we are recessed.